Good evening. Can folks hear me okay? Okay, why don't we go ahead and get started if the clerk could please call the roll.
Store.
Here.
Stop. Summers.
Present.
Taylor. Thor's Lynn.
Here.
Walton. Carter.
Here.
Coer.
She's here.
Esri.
Here.
Portato.
Yeah.
Goss. Harper.
Here.
King.
Here.
Laxson.
Here.
McGuire. Michaels. Pasalaqua.
Here.
Paul. Rodriguez. Patterson.
Here.
Thank you. Next up, we will have public participation. If you are a member of the public in the attendee section, if you would like to comment, you get up to five minutes to comment, and if you could raise your little hand, and then I will allow you to speak. Alright. First, we have Leanne Kelly. Leanne, you are now... I think you have to unmute.
Ready?
Yes.
Alright, hold on, I have to pull up the speech. Good evening, I'm Leanne Kelly and a resident of Champaign. I trust the board wants a thriving county where every person can be well. Sadly, we know it's not the case now. In fact, two weeks ago, we had two pregnant women in the hospital, not because they were the target, but they got shot anyways. Moreover, any act of gun violence traumatizes numerous people beyond the target. Like my hairdresser who lives in Rantoul. Her seventeen-year-old was taking care of the younger sisters one afternoon while she was at work and called in a panic because someone was in a car shooting at the house across the street. She couldn't find her eleven-year-old sister. Each time such an event occurs, a person's fight, flight, or freeze mode gets triggered. And without healing support, that person could end up living in flight, fright, or freeze mode. And this correlates with why traumatized people are at higher risk of committing violence. I'm here to urge you to invest five to ten percent of the ARP funds in a coordinated, comprehensive, and collaborative violence prevention plan. This may sound unrealistic because we typically think of either programming for youth or support for the survivors of gun violence post an act of violence. But in fact, the CDC and NIH define violence prevention as community wellness, and they measure it according to the social determinants of health. There are five categories. First, economic stability. Second, neighborhood and environment. Third, healthcare. Fourth, education. And fifth, social community context. And to varying degrees, the county board is already investing in these. Yet until the county embraces a collaborative, comprehensive approach that is coordinated with local governments and local agencies to strategically address these in a comprehensive manner, I do not foresee us returning to the 2010 or even earlier levels of violence. Another model for identifying elements of violence prevention is the adverse community environments model. These elements are poverty, discrimination, community disruption, lack of opportunity, economic mobility, and social capital, and that is one category, poor housing equality or availability, and violence. Proven evidence-based models abound that use these frameworks. From the Prevention Institute, Robert Wood Johnson, CDC, and others, there are models that can be implemented. One strategy found in the majority of those is a one-stop center. The key operating principles for such centers are the use of a wraparound model for every family involved because every single person needs support. All providers are initially and continually trained in trauma-informed practice. This is not the case at this moment. According to SAMSA, the six guiding principles of trauma-informed communities are safety, trustworthiness, and transparency, peer support, and mutual help, collaboration and mutuality, empowerment, voice, and choice, and finally, understanding of cultural, historical, and gender issues. These centers are the location for the majority of services provided. This means providers come to the center which make access to services easier for those needing resources. And this is done by having meeting spaces that can be used on a rotating basis. Well, with some providers, but others, like the Public Health District or a township, may have designated space. And the centers have one intake form that all partners countrywide agree upon and use. And this makes for better follow-up, also providing more comprehensive data. If this is one of the outcomes of a comprehensive approach, if we as a community can move from providing resources to strategically addressing all the precursors to violence as well as building resilience and ensuring healing from violence with a community-based, community-centric, and community-led approach, we can not only reduce violence, we can become a thriving county. Thank you.
You're on mute.
Alright.
Thank you.
Next up, sorry about that. Thank you, Leanne. Next up, I have Creo and I will be, and then Arthur Paganini, and then Jenny Putnam. So next up is Creo. And one second, I'm gonna... Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I noticed that some of the people that will be giving testimonies this evening are reading from a document, and if they would, I'd like for them to share those documents with the county so that we can refer to them later.
Yes, please, yes, definitely. If, yes, Leanne, if you'd like to share that, I'll share an email a few times throughout the meeting, but if you would like to share that, that would be great. Thank you. I also want to say to our tech folks that are helping me run this meeting, I know how to bring people over to panelists, but I don't know how to bring them back. So I might... I might need help with that. Alright, next up, Creo.
Hi, I live in Garden Hills in Champaign, and I wholeheartedly support everything that Ms. Kelly said about a wraparound center in our neighborhood. That would be fantastic. But speaking very simply, this has been a really rough year in Garden Hills as far as the amount of violence. I live on a little street, Anita Drive, that's between the post office on Mattis and the elementary school. And within four blocks of my home, there have been two very violent shootings. Last Friday, or this past Friday, I was folding clothes in my laundry room, and my daughter came in to ask me a question. She's visiting from ISU. And we heard gunshots. This was early evening on a Friday. And it's like, hey, did you hear those gunshots? And she's just like, no, I'm not hearing gunshots. I don't want to hear gunshots. So it's gotten to the point in my neighborhood and in my life where we don't even call in the gunshots anymore because it's become normalized, and it's scary. And I'm really tired of it. I'm hoping ARP can do a few very simple changes. If we could just get lighting in Garden Hills, it would be safer for everybody in the community as well as the officers serving the community. Right now, we don't have sidewalks or streetlights, so there's no such thing as I'm going on an evening walk. It's just not done in my neighborhood. I know several people have put in Ring cameras, and they're fantastic. We are getting information from them. But after dark, a camera's only as good as the lighting on the street. If you want to catch a license plate number or the make and model of a car, if there are no streetlights, your chances of doing this are very low. So just from a very, very simple standard, please see if you can help get us some streetlights. Unfortunately, we seem to be one of the center locales for the violence this summer, and I feel that streetlights would really help. Another thing that's been tossed around a lot in communities that I'm speaking with is a SWIFT program. It's a way to get people some education, to get a better job almost immediately. It will help fund their GED. If they don't have one, it'll give them a stipend. Hopefully, if we can get people a way to feel more part of the community, have enough money to have a home and a family, they won't feel the need to value life so lowly. So all I want to say is I'm glad you guys are taking the time to get public opinion on the ARP spending. And again, if there's anything you can do to help Garden Hills fund lighting, I feel it would be safer for everybody involved. Thanks.
Next up, we, thank you very much, Creo. Next up, we have, just so you have a sense of the order, folks. We have Arthur Paganini, then April Thomas, then Grant Kabanski. Kabansi are the next few. So Arthur just disappeared off my screen, however.
Hi, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, great. Thank you. There you go, Arthur.
Alright, thank you for having me. So hi, my name is Arthur. I'm a resident of Urbana. I also happen to be a member here of the PSL. That's Party for Socialism and Liberation. And I don't want to scare you all with that name. But I just want to say that I fully agree with what you guys have been saying so far, but I really want to see some like concrete, some concrete like words, some concrete actions. I appreciate what the previous speaker said about the SWIFT program. I know that PSL, along with DSA in Champaign-Urbana, have collected hundreds of signatures for SWIFT program. It's very popular among all the neighborhoods that we've been in. I personally have spoken to about forty or fifty people around Champaign-Urbana. They love it. They love the idea. I agree with what the previous commenter said. Another thing that I want to bring up, which I feel is very important, is as many of you might know, the Supreme Court struck down the eviction moratorium decision recently, and that's going to come into effect soon. I know that the governor extended it somewhat, but something I just want to make sure is that the residents of this community will not be evicted because they can't afford to pay rent. We are still dealing with the pandemic, and you know, it's not easy for a lot of people. I personally work a food service job. I know that a lot of people in there are, they're on the brink, right? You know, it's not easy in these times. And I don't want to see the eviction moratorium end, and then all of a sudden, people start getting evicted, and then we can't be surprised when violence goes up again. So I just, I'm worried about that. I'm worried about people's housing. I'm worried for everyone in Champaign-Urbana about that. In terms of like a concrete decision about that, I would ask that the county board talk to the sheriff, the county sheriff, to not enforce invictions when the eviction moratorium ends. That's all that we locally can do, really, barring some state level or national level action. But I do think that if we're talking about violence, we have to talk also about people's access to resources, and housing is one of the key components of that. So, yeah, that's all I really had to say. I appreciate you taking the time to take this seriously because I take it seriously. The other members of the PSL take it seriously, and the residents of Champaign-Urbana take it seriously. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Arthur. Next up, we have April Thomas.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, my name is April Thomas, and I am a resident... Sorry, let me turn my camera on, sorry. Okay, and I am a resident of Urbana. I was impacted with gun violence. It was my son. My son, who is seventeen now, is currently serving time for shooting someone. He had his first encounter with juvenile detention center when he was fifteen because he was caught with a loaded gun in his bookbag. Due to his age, he was released from there. There was no agencies that would, no programs, anything available to assist him or help him at all because he was only fifteen. During the second semester of that year, he was attacked at school by two students. One who attended Urbana High School and another student who did not attend Urbana High School and entered the building without approval and attacked my son. And my son was arrested and charged with aggravated battery for, you know, just trying to protect himself. Last summer of 2020, he encountered his second case because he shot someone last year by Douglas Park. My son is very popular, a popular kid. I mean, he was on track for his credits, graduation. He was in sports, involved in church. He had family support and church support. So now he's now serving time for the crime that he committed, which is okay because like I told him, he did commit a crime, and you just can't expect to commit a crime and not have to serve a consequence. So when he's, he will be twenty-one when he's released, and I would just want some community programs or agencies to keep him on the right track and not for him to go, you know, keep continuing a path of violence or, you know, just because it's horrible. And then even as on the parent's side of violence, there was no community support for me or agencies for me to go to when my son was going through this. I didn't know how to help my son. I tried to do everything myself. I had, you know, church support from my pastor, my family, my friends, like Regina Parnell, Janice Mitchell, they all helped me. But however, my son isn't deceased, but he is incarcerated. So I feel like it needs to be a program for parents because we go through that as well. Even though our kids are deceased or incarcerated, we suffer as well. So I feel like on the parent's side, it needs to be like an agency or something that we could have in support for parents. Thank you.
Thank you very much, April. Thank you. So next up, and just to give you a sense of the order, we have Grant, then Alex, then Vincent. So next up is Grant. And you can speak when you are ready. Grant Kabansi, oh, there you go.
Hi, I'm Haddad Gamazi. I live in Urbana. I just want to say a few things. I think a lot of people have gotten at some really important points regarding due causes of violence. And I think it's really important that we think about these things because, you know, we have tried, you know, brute force, non-arteric tactics have been tried, and they haven't worked. They've just ended up with more of our community members, our family members, our friends hurt, incarcerated, et cetera, et cetera. It has not solved the consistent problem of violence in this community. I think a lot of people have touched on a really, a lot of really important points regarding the SWIFT program, other programs that could help people, you know, stay on, stay on a good path in their life, you know, work for themselves, you know, make a living, keep a roof over their head. Also, people have touched on the eviction moratorium, which is just, you know, is a disaster. A lot of people around the country, a lot of people in Champaign County are facing evictions. October third, when the Illinois State Moratorium expires, there will be a wave of evictions coming in this county. And I would urge every elected official in this meeting to please take action on this. A wave of evictions in Champaign-Urbana would be a disaster. It would be a disaster for public safety, not to mention public health and the local economy. I would urge the county board to take action to protect our residents against evictions, and also to urge the Sheriff of Champaign County to refuse to carry out eviction orders so that we don't have these deadlines every few weeks hanging over the heads of residents who've just gotten down on their luck. And I want to close by saying that a lot of people have talked about public safety, you know, to call for police militarization and the presence of militarized police in our communities. That hasn't worked. You know, there is research that shows that militarized police departments are more likely to kill civilians. That just creates more violence. And that's what, that's not what we need. We don't need more contributions to this cycle of violence. We need solutions that'll get at the root cause of these issues. and, you know, prevent people from getting into these bad places in the first place. Um, a lot of people making a living, you know, and, and, you know, immediately, we need to protect people's well-being, protect people against evictions. So I'm urging everyone, please take action on this. Uh, we can't afford to be facing, uh, crisis of evictions October third, and people shouldn't have to worry about being evicted October third or frankly, ever. And I would urge those who care, especially elected officials who care about, uh, community safety, about public safety to, you know, protect the needs of our residents and not just send more militarized police into our communities. The strategy that hasn't worked is only create violence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, next, we will hear from Alex Rogers. Alex. Alex, can you hear me?
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name is Alex Rogers. I'm a resident of Urbana. I'm here representing the Party for Socialism and Liberation. And I, like people that have spoken earlier today, uh, would like to call attention to some of the problems of community violence that we've been experiencing, uh, and as well the little solutions that we can take, uh, to, to relieve some of this. Um, if we want to talk about, as, as one of the, uh, commenters previously said about, you know, sustained trauma that leaves someone in the state of fight or flight, uh, the COVID nineteen pandemic has ostensibly been that for many people. Having to worry if one week they will be in a house, the next week they won't. Whether or not they will continue to have access to a job that provides the means to continue supporting themselves, whether or not they will be at risk of eviction or utility shut-off, these things, uh, contribute and, and weigh on the minds of, of thousands of, of local residents. Uh, and this is not something that is going to be simply solved by either telling people or forcing people to either go back to work in unsafe conditions or to evict them from their properties, from their homes, and allow them to fend for themselves on the streets. That is not responsible community advocacy. That is not responsible, uh, uh, leadership and and I think we should take every option but that. Now, to suggest a few options that I think work as potential solutions, um, first of all, making sure that nobody in Champaign-Urbana is evicted, period. I was talking to somebody a couple of days ago at a protest that we held. They were legally evicted from their, from their home. All of their stuff was thrown out. They were told that if they were to go back to the dumpster, that they would be arrested. I see that as not only illegal but immoral, and we should absolutely be doing things to prevent this from happening. Um, this is even underneath the current moratorium, which is set to expire October third. And I, I think it's, I think it's laughable that, that we know that there are things that we could be doing to, to stop this from happening and, and nobody is taking action. So I'm here to say that we should demand, absolutely demand fervently a, a, and with, with no, uh, uh, you know, with, with a clear goal in mind, demand that the sheriff cancel and, and refuse to prosecute and process all evictions, even leading up to and after October third, when the statewide moratorium expires. Um, I think to do anything else would basically be an act of community violence onto the community, and all of you sitting here today are morally responsible for that. Uh, secondly, I'd like to talk about the SWIFT program, which other people have also talked about today. Uh, you know, we should be not only matching the million dollars of federal funding, but contributing as much as we can to a program that will do the exact thing that stops crime, providing material needs for people. Making sure that people get job training, making sure that people get access to jobs in IT, healthcare, things like that that are not only beneficial to themselves as a means of income, but also are beneficial to the community. Um, I urge you to listen to not only my, my comments, but the comments of people that have spoken previously. And I urge you to go to the sheriff and demand that he no longer process evictions now while they are illegal and after October third, when they are no, no longer illegal, but still immoral. Uh, thank you for, thank you for the time, and, uh, I hope you all make the right decision.
Uh, thank you very much, Alex. Um, Mr. McGuire, I see that you have your hand up. Is there, we're right now doing, just doing public comment?
Um, well, that's kind of odd. I don't know how we would better understand, um, the capacity and the resources these organizations, organizations have to, um, um, to meet their goals that they're suggesting. The second thing is that, um, eviction moratorium has been brought up multiple times, and RPC has funding for rental assistance.
Yeah.
So I wanted to make that clear to the people that seem to have this theme that we should tell the
All right, Jim, I'm gonna ask you to stop. Jim, I'm gonna, Jim, Mr. McGuire, we're in public comment. So later on, when we have, this is just public comment. We haven't even gotten to the agenda yet. So we're just doing public comment right now. And as always, when we do public comment, the board doesn't interact with folks, right? And then when we get to the actual agenda, um, if you, if you have points to make, by all means, please make them. But I just want to just be clear, we're just on the public comment side of things right now. And, um,
So which part do we actually ask these questions? We just make?
When we get to the actual agenda, as in every meeting that we've ever had, the public comment, this is public comment, just like any other meeting, when at the beginning we have public comment, that's what this is. Okay? Is everybody?
Great.
All right. Great. Okay.
See when that happens.
Okay. So next up, we have Vincent, um, who, and then Josh, and then Ken Salo, Josh Payne, and then Ken Salo. Uh, so we have Vincent, and just to remind folks, um, we are asking you to keep to five minutes for your public comment.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, I'm Vincent Unduho, and, uh, I am, um, I work with a housing authority with the Youth Build Program presently, and I also, um, have been working with First Followers and with the Go Mad, um, program there. What I do is I train, uh, young people from ages sixteen to twenty-four in construction, remodeling houses, and the construction curriculum and things of that nature. And what I'm, um, here to say is that, um, I feel like there's a great need in our community, uh, to do more. Uh, the numbers in which we are doing in these programs, they, they are, they are, um, pretty good, but I just feel like with some more resources, we can service the community a little better. By the way of the, the young people being sixteen to eighteen have been, um, a good number of those have been the ones who have been either involved with the gun violence in our community or victims of the gun violence that's been in our community. Uh, in particular, I've served sixty to eighty young people through the two programs within the last three years. And out of those sixty to eighty, there have been five deaths by, by gun violence, um, through the, the, well, participating in that program. And then there are others, a couple of more who have been, um, shot but not fatally injured. And then all of them are either on probation or dropouts from high school or from a low-income background. What I'm saying is resources that may help, um, further the workforce development of the young people who are right in the fray of this violence. You know, give them another oppo- opportunity. So if I'm one man who can serve sixty to eighty in three years, then what could, what would it look like if I had, you know, four, five, six, a team that could, and with the resource that can service more? And I'm just talking about the community, um, the African-American community that is, um, experiencing, uh, heightened gun violence through this COVID, um, time. And so if you, if you, I don't know if anyone will agree with me or not, but the numbers seem to me have gone up. Shootings, uh, in our community and all of those, the gun violence have gone up. So just here to say that, um, there's some work being done, and I'm, and I, I don't feel like I'm the only one in the community has, is doing this work. But whatever I've served, I feel like we, we probably can do service a bit more, um, than the numbers. You know, if I've done sixty, one person's done sixty to eighty in three years, what would it look like if we had, we multiply that by five? Or, or, you know, something to that number. And so what I'm saying to you, um, how the dropout rate is happening um, amongst African-American males and females, we have something in place. And I'm not solely, um, targeting African-Americans, but I'm just saying that because this is a demographic, the bulk of the demographic that I serve are Latinos as well. Um, but, um, just want to, you know, make that, uh, statement or plea to say, um, there are new resources that are needed to help direct the young people who are in a space that if they don't have anything positive, then it seems to be the going thing is to pick up a gun and go out and recap it. You know, so we have people, you know, street team, uh, those who, uh, do outreach to go out and engage with the young people, bring them into the program and try to help them get into a, um, positive, positive direction. Now, I told you, there are a few who, lives who've been in the program who have lost, you know, through gun violence, even being in the program. Just to show you that this gun violence is, is a tough thing. It, it's a tough situation, but I do feel like if we had more resources, uh, um, in that direction, then we can service more of the young people to get them in a positive direction. And a lot of our goals is to get them out of Champaign and get them onto higher learning in other communities to where, uh, not that they can't and couldn't learn here, but is to say what goes on here in Champaign-Urbana with their age group is tough to even go and get an education because they're having to look over their backs for the gun violence and all the things that's going on, you know? So that's my plea, or that's what, you know, I come to just speak about, uh, workforce development in our community as it deals with the, um, demographics of sixteen to twenty-four-year-old African-American males and females and Latinos, uh, and, and those who are from low-income households. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vincent. Um, next up, we have Josh Payne.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm in the middle of changing my, my daughter's diaper. Um, I, just give me just a second. I will turn my camera on, but I do not want to miss my turn. Hold on, baby. Come here. So I just want to say, come here, sit down for just a second. So I just want to say, if it's okay, can you guys still hear me?
Yes.
So I just want to say, I'm, turn my camera on in just a second. Um, in my professional opinion, and I will give credence to my background in a second, but, um, in my professional opinion, when it comes to the violence that we're talking about, that we're dealing with in this city, in these cities, in this county, at exponential proportionate levels that we've never seen, it's my opinion, especially as Vincent just alluded to, that there's guys that he works with that go out into the community and are at the base ground level where the violence is with the people, the kids and the youth and the families that are dealing with. That's work that I do. And in my professional opinion, I truly believe that we are missing the overall bigger picture when it comes to the violence. We can't solve and address the root causes of this violence without addressing the wounds and the symptoms first. And in that, in my mind, is not a matter of prevention or responsive type measures or programs. But I do believe those things are just as vitally, maybe just as vitally important or are extremely vitally important. Don't get me wrong. But if you do not address the most important piece, piece of all this, which is the infrastructure being implemented and established fully at a grassroots level, then you're going to see this violence that plagues our community continue to happen. Because we, we, we are able to heal wounds and we're able to get to some of the symptoms and the causes through some of the measures that we put in place. But if we do not get to the, to the place of where this violence is with something like a wraparound community one-stop shop that would completely be a game changer in this community, I don't think we're going to see the violence stop. And for those of, those of us that don't know who I am, my name is Josh Payne. I am the former Outreach Manager of CUAP with the program TRUTH, which was champagne, first of its kind in Champaign, doing front-end violence prevention. And I was trained for about two and a half, three years under Ms. Patricia Avery from two thousand fourteen to two thousand seventeen and from the Institute of Nonviolence in Chicago and Ceasefire Chicago to learn how to be specialized to do grassroots intervention for high-intense violence situations and mediations, and how to become restorative justice practice and, and how to deescalate situations and how to use violence preventative measures. I went through extensive training, working on the street with outreach teams, learning what these causes, what these roots were. And the most effective, it, it's a data-driven. It's, it's proven in the statistics and the numbers that if you have the right structured, effective program in place, the right model, and for this community, I know like the Richmond model and other things like that would be complete game changers. And I'm urging this community to change its perception of how you're looking at this violence. We continue to do exactly what the police do, and all respect to law enforcement, who I work with and enjoy, they, who, who appreciate the work I do and I appreciate the work they do. But the police can only respond after the violence has occurred. I'm in a neighborhood right now, I'm an Urbana resident. I live in Aspen Court, Old Scottswood, where violence has been taking place. The only thing we have for these kids to do out here is a basketball hoop that our property manager Ashley put up. And as, and there's been multiple shootings out here, and I've been trying to work and coordinate with families to get wraparound services because I'm actually working as a community responder for CU Tri, the coalition right now, doing community outreach work, and I work for CDAC for the University of Illinois, doing workforce development, trying to get marginalized and disproportionate populations, long-term sustainable income jobs in the energy efficiency field, things that people who are suffering with violence need those opportunities and that leg up to get out of these traumas that they are experiencing. So I just am here to say today that I have been working on the committee with First Followers in this, in this effort to launch what is so needed, what I, what many of you know, I have been advocating for years. Give the opportunity to community guys like me, to formerly incarcerated gentlemen like me and women who want to get trained and learn how to work these practices and get on the, the, the ground level with families and become trusted members to refer them to resources, to, to build relationships with their kids, to give them a safe space to interact and feel at peace in a place where they can come and share what the trauma that none of us, nobody on this call except for Ms. Ms. April, maybe a couple others that I don't want to call people out. But there's not very many people of us that can say we actually have dealt with this gun violence firsthand. And I don't want that to continue to happen where it starts to reach other levels. It's already bad enough how, how much it's widespread in our community. If you give us the opportunity to work the data, if you give us the funding and the opportunity to collab as a community, become a network that bridges the gap to help law enforcement be sustained, to help community programs and community action agencies and training programs, get more people in there to help turn, ta- turn these numbers and deter this violence down. But you need to have a center and activity, a place where people like me, I, other jobs that I'm doing, I would have to put in my, I would have to put in my two weeks. And I know this is the type of work that I'm called to do, and there's other organizations, as Vincent and many others have said. But if we do not, and I'm wrapping up with this, if we do not really take a deeper look and, and see that we have to be on the grassroots and we have to start to use effective data-driven studies and results to, or, or programs to get these results, to turn neighborhoods and communities like this around into activity centers within themselves where resources and funding and programs and mentors and people are being connected to those things, or else we're just going to continue to see an imploding of our community in Champaign-Urbana like we've never been seen before, like this summer. God bless you and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Josh. Um, next up, we have Ken Salo, followed by Jennifer Enoch, followed by Tracy Quigg-Thomas. Thank you, Josh. Next up, we have Ken Salo, followed by Jennifer Enoch, followed by Tracy Quigg-Thomas. Mr. Salo, whenever you're ready.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. I hope you can all hear me clearly. Thanks again for the opportunity. I had some prepared remarks, but let me play off the brilliant contributions by Josh and Vince earlier. I think with many on the call, we are recognizing, I think, maybe belatedly that gun violence is a serious problem. But of course, gun violence doesn't take place in the vacuum. It takes place in specific areas, in certain spatial contexts, and it also takes place in a particular political and economic moment that that we're in right now. For my sense, I, I teach urban planning at the university with many of you here. I also volunteer tutor at the schools. And I wanted to just emphasize, I think, what, what Vincent mentioned, that when the youth reach for guns, we've lost the battle. If they see that as the only source of empowerment, then we've actually lost the battle. What is the battle that we are talking about here as an educator, like many of you here, is the battle for the hearts and minds, right? It's an educational battle and it's, it's actually criminal that we are in an educational, an education centered institution, right? And that we fail those resources. That's notwithstanding the excellent connections that we have had. But really, as educators, we believe hearts and minds through communication. And really, communication stops when the violence begins. Violence is a form of saying, in particular gun violence, that we have nothing further to say to each other. And I've been there, I've seen kids in the high schools, I've seen violence intervention programs, the trauma informed options. Having said that, so I'm with Vince there, and I really think it's an indictment in the educational community. And I'm, for one, is not prepared to give up. I think there are many on the call here. And I think this is a great opportunity, opportunity under the recovery plan for us to rethink alternative educations. What is it that we are failing? There are brilliant people who study this. There are people underground, but so alternative education models, trauma informed as well. But I wanted to say, second thing, playing off what Josh said, I think the behavioral, what I think about as behavioral violence, in other words, sort of gun violence, has a deeper root cause as what Josh talked about, the infrastructural violence. There's a brilliant anthropologist physician by the name of Paul Farmer, who I highly encourage. I've been convinced and I teach in my course, something called structural violence, right? For him, he uses the term, it's a very, it's very easy Google away for the members to go and see. If we are going to get to, to deal with the structural violence, that is the systemic ways that we cause harm socially, all right, and individually, and that people suffer. And those of course, causes the economic systems, the resources, right? They, they, they are much more difficult to see and consequently, they're much more difficult to apportion blame, right? But the way the system works, all right, it produces violence without, because of course, it's historical factors. And there's no individual perpetrator, there's the historical perpetrators, right? Poverty, for example, is a form of structural violence, right? What Josh was talking about, under-resourced neighborhoods is a form of structural violence, right? These are historical legacies because of the system that we're living in. And there's a dire need for those safe spaces. Having said that, I want to say that with Vince and with Josh, I've, in my teaching, has emphasized a kind of getting back to what resources for hope do we have out there? Of course, we can't give that up. And I've, for one, made sure in my teaching, like, you know, Ms. Fortado as well, we take our students off the campus and engage them with programs like the First Followers, like with the labor unions where they can see the, 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 where they say the, the rubber meets the road. And what I'm trying to do is to recover these stories, but these stories are not by themselves, you know, adequate unless we can put them in the political and economic context. And then I think is what is, what is the task of, you know, a, an institution like that, the county board itself, all right, is also an institution. And we all know we're living under compromise, we're all trying to pay the creditors, right? We individually, the states is trying to pay the people who get their bonds and so forth. But right now, there's a magical moment, I think, to put in place an alternate. And by put in place, I mean hopefully institutionalize that, where we can, one, deal with the trauma, right? And then, two, also begin to deal, and I'm in the profession I am because I believe in the power of education and transformative education to change the hearts and minds, and people can begin to reach out to, to each other. So I wish you well with your pursuit. It's an important time. The organizations like First Followers and the brilliant religious organizations and church institutions that in my mind is doing excellent job, right, in, in finding these alternative forms of education. So thank you for your time and place and good luck with your, with your pursuit.
Thank you very much, Dr. Salo. Next, we're going to have Jennifer Enoch. Jen, whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name is Jennifer and I live in Champaign. I'm a nurse. And I wanted to come here tonight and ask you to use some of the American Rescue Plan money to put streetlights and sidewalks in, in the Garden Hills neighborhood, as well as to fix the drainage problem. I see that those are caused, those issues are causing a lot of problems and a lack of safety in that neighborhood. A really large number of people live in that neighborhood, a really large number of kids. And I think we need to pay attention to these safety issues as one of our top priorities as a community. And I also wanted to ask that you would use some of the, the American Rescue Plan money to fund the activities of groups that are doing really good work and have a lot of valuable experience already in, in violence prevention, groups like First Followers, CU Trauma and Resilience, CMishive, and Truce. And I, I think the Violence Interrupters in, in Truce had such amazing training and they're, they're ready, but there's just no funding. They're able to do some of this really good work, but we just have not been able to come together as a community to put enough resources into these things to make a big difference. And I also just want to echo what Ken was saying about, I hope that we can, that maybe you as, as a county board can come together to do like a deep analysis of structural violence that's existing in our community and how to stop that. And I want to echo what Josh said too, hoping that we can come together as a community to really collaborate in solving these problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next up, we have Tracy Quigg-Thomas, then we have Brandy, and then Megan. Tracy, whenever you're ready. You're on mute, Tracy.
There we go. Thank you. It was just taking a moment to log in. I just thank everyone who's in attendance this evening. This is a very important issue in our community. I am currently the PTA Council President in Champaign. Recently, we've had parents come to us. They're concerned about the violence in their schools, shootings that have occurred near schools. And as we all know, violence that affects like one part of our community affects people throughout our community in direct and indirect ways. During this pandemic, we've really seen that schools have had to step up and play an increasing role in the social safety net. When school was canceled last March, you know, the school really stepped up and made sure that the kids in our community were fed. But a lot of times, I feel like we are, in the absence of a strong social safety net, the schools are oftentimes being left to kind of pick up the pieces and do what they can for children in our community. And they just frankly, don't have the capacity, nor should that be their role in our community. There's already amazing organizations in our community like First Followers and CU Try. I've been in meetings with them for years and months, just getting to know the passion that they have for our community, the connections that they have, these grassroots organizations that are deeply connected with the people that are experiencing the most harms by this violence are the people that we need to connect with and speak with them about how to address this violence in our community. And I would just strongly support the work that First Followers is trying to get accomplished, to get this kind of resource center set up. Because like I said, schools, there will be a child that will come to school and have needs and, you know, the social, there's only so much the social worker can do there. So along with those grassroots organizations, there are evidence based programs, a couple of them been mentioned this evening, like the Richmond Program that we talked about. And I would just really urge you all in how we are framing this problem of community violence and how we're framing that will really determine the solutions that we are going to use to solve this problem. This is a problem that affects everyone in the community. We should really, hopefully, do evidence based things that, again, many people have mentioned, so I won't repeat, to just help solve this problem of community violence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Brandy. McCoy. Brandy, whenever you're ready.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Brandy McCoy. I am an Urbana resident. I would like to echo my fellow community members and their advocacy of the SWIFT program in the community push for the matcha mill funding. You know, if we're going to address community violence in a way, and, and with it's effective, a way that actually addresses community violence, we have to start giving people another choice. This program is fresh to our area, but its first year was far too successful for us to forego expanding its enrollment and resources. There are more than fifty-two people in our community every year in need of these services. I would also like to echo their demands that not a single eviction take place in our county after the statewide moratorium expires. This pandemic is not over. Lives in public health are still at stake. But in terms of violence, we'll be seeing an increase rather than a decrease if we put these people on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Megan.
Hi, thank you for getting me in kind of last minute. I've been watching and wanted to contribute to the fact that I am a privileged white woman who works in our schools. And I've been working with children in the north end of Champaign since two thousand and three, when I worked at the Boys and Girls Club. And I've worked at Garden Hills, Dr. Howard, Stratton, Central High School, and send my own children to Unit Four. And there is a level of distance from white parents such as myself, who send our kids through the schools or off them out of the schools. And that distance is actively harmful. And with that actively harmful distance, we don't know about the organizations that are already in place, that have an infrastructure and relationships with families to both do wraparound trauma support and to do preventative action. So I don't want to add a bunch of just me talking to what's already been said. But one big thing for me is when I'm at Garden Hills, it is hard for me to park my newish car on the streets because it is muddy, it is wet, it is dirty. And that is not a function of what the people who live in the neighborhood have asked for. So I'm going to go, street lighting there is one of the big infrastructure things that I think would really add to the ability to build safe communities after dark. I live by West Side Park and in the recent weeks, I've stopped letting my kids go out for walks after dark because when my kids go out for walks, I've started to feel the fear that generations upon generations of black Americans have been feeling for a long time. I do want to say that because the infrastructure is in place and the people, so I, when I was teaching at Urbana High School, I lost a student to gun violence and that impacted me pretty strongly. But I recognized after a little bit of struggle that I was not the person to meet them where they are. It needs to be someone from an organization, from their church. It needs to be someone, and this is a white atheist, atheist mother saying, it needs to be churches that have funding going. It needs to be community organizations. I cannot say enough good things about CU Try. I'm bringing them into my university courses to help our student teachers reach out. First Followers, I was in conversation with a parent of a young black girl and she said, what even does my daughter have to like, look forward to in this town? When you have nothing to look forward to and no bottles, what do you do? And one of the things that's helped is, I believe, Josh spoke on providing options for education. And I don't think it needs to be big, but it needs to be funding our organizations that already have the infrastructure and already have built up trust with communities that have been, had their resources taken from them by people who are already pulled about free sources. So thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you very much, Megan. Next, I'm going to see if Jenny Putnam wants to speak. I've seen her hand a few times. Jenny. Jenny, did you want to speak?
Okay, join us panelists, join us.
Jenny, we could hear you.
Okay.
Jenny, you could speak.
Maybe, maybe, maybe I could go to a different place. I have two computers open. I'll be back at another place.
We could hear you.
Oh, well, okay. If you can hear me, that's, that's fine. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, here's, here's what I want to say. Chair Fortado, thank you. Thank you for two consecutive nights of hearing from your constituents. County board members, thank you for two evenings. And to everyone who has taken time to participate tonight, thank you so much. I'm every, I've been pulsing with things that my neighbors have contributed. I live in Urbana. I want you to know that your constituents, whether they live in the Garden Hills or the Cherry Hills, we are all vibrating with fear and we're just beside ourselves with the epidemic of violence. And, and we want you to do something. You know that you're doing the right thing by dedicating a portion of the American Rescue Plan funds to this problem. In this community, we have proven activists who know how to help get the job done. I'm thinking of the Violence Interrupters, who Josh mentioned, First Followers, the beautiful program that our housing authority operates called Youth Build. Wow, Youth Build, give young people skills they can build houses, have jobs, feel meaningful. And we're doing that now. Spend more money doing that. I'm thinking of the group HB Neighborhood Transformations. HB, that's the hood. It's H, the hood. The hood votes, the hood voice, the hood has vision. HB Neighborhood Transformation is dedicated to quelling community violence. They've got space to do it now where people in the community can find them. There's an office on Main Street, just west of the courthouse. Think what HB Transformation could do if we made sure that they had the funds to do it more effectively. Think what HV Transformation could do if we made sure that they had the funds to do it more effectively. As a member of the local chapter of Moms Demand Action, or an end to gun violence in America, I have participated for years in the monthly meetings of the Community Coalition. And there, I've had the privilege of meeting Tracy Days and the young people he works with in the program called DREAM. It's a long acronym, D-R-E-A-A-M, Driven to Reach Excellence in Academic Achievement for Males. We've got proven actors. Dream knows how to get it done. Dream has been getting it done, giving meaningful participation to young people, the wraparound that so many of tonight's participants have mentioned. Tracy Days' program began as a pilot program one summer. He had 10 five-year-olds getting, getting ready to go to kindergarten for the first time. Within two years, Mr. Days and Dream had 100 elementary school students, most of them African-American, participating in his program. And they're, they're driven to reach excellence and academic achievement. We know how to do it in this community. I'll be so grateful when some ARP money can go to help our proven Violence Interrupters do the work that they know how to do, that they've proven that they know how to do it. And thank you so much for being open to, to your neighbors, your constituents, for, or just crying for, for some help from the epidemic. It's, we're, we're, we're all tired of being afraid. And I thank you so much for dedicating yourselves to bringing solutions to the problem.
Thank you very much, Jenny. Next up, I have Mike Ingram, and that is the last community member that I see that wants to speak. So if, if you did want to speak in the community public comment section, please let me know. Mr. Ingram. Mr. Ingram, you have the mic.
Okay, I think I got in as a panelist. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Cool, sorry, I'm away this week, so just trying to get everything organized has been hilarious. But I want to thank everybody who actually took the time to come and speak today. I think participation is important. I'd echo that when meetings are back in person, that I think the board should try to look at ways to let people communicate digitally like this. Because as we can see, people would like to, to speak regularly at things like this. I'd also like to thank, as Ms. Putnam did before, I'd like to thank all the board members for taking time, not, not, not even a week after you finished your legislative budget hearings of giving a Monday and a Tuesday. Several of you are back here on a Monday and presumably a Tuesday again to listen to constituents speak out. And I'd like to applaud nearly all of you for being able to get through public comment without interrupting the process. A few people have mentioned Garden Hills. Obviously, this is a thing. I represented Garden Hills when I was on the county board, and I thought it was very important to speak about it, even though really as a county body, we don't operate very much in terms of the infrastructure that Garden Hills needs. I think the ARP funding has brought us some interesting opportunities and maybe the ability to pool some resources or work across multiple disciplines or multiple legislative bodies. And so I, I would kind of would like to encourage folks. I don't think everybody realizes, or maybe everybody is not thinking about it from a public perspective, about the fact that the county is getting a ton of money as, as are the cities. And so I think, you know, if we have a way to maybe bolster something that, that the, that the city of Champaign could be doing in that regard. Streetlights and things like that are, are long, long time asks from that neighborhood. And a lot of people who like to denigrate that neighborhood and, and speak about all the, all the negative things that they see about it, don't seem to care too much to do the things that might help mitigate some of the problems that they have. Also, the programs that people have been mentioning, you know, and I won't name them all, but you know, SWIFT and Youth Build and things like that. I think we've all realized that these programs are not, none of them are, are the perfect vessel to fix things. They're all doing their own little part. And I'm kind of, you know, we throw money at things as, as much as we can or as often as we can get the votes for it. We have some extra to work with here, and I think the ones that we've had, that we've seen major success, success with could maybe use a little bit of, of extra bolstering as well. You know, I don't, I don't relish the idea that we have to pick and choose even with this amount of money. But, but there are, there are things that, you know, that aren't going to get the funding that, that we maybe think that need to. But I also see a lot of folks that spend a lot of time trying to knock down programs or say that they can't fix everything. And again, that's correct. But also, if this is about percentages and this is about mitigating, you know, the greater problem, then any amount of success that we can get and any amount of success that we can buy, especially in terms of people's lives, I think is important. And, you know, single, singular failures within these things do not, you know, do not constitute a wholly, a wholly failed project. I'll bring up one small point that I saw, as, as Ms. Putnam mentioned, HVNT. You know, I went to one of their events earlier this year, and there was a man there who talked about having gotten, he'd been locked up on, on charges before. He was out. He was trying to get his life together. And there was a day that he got a phone call to potentially go and get some retribution, some justice for something, you know, a community issue. And just a little bit earlier in that day, he'd been called with a job offer for something that paid well. And that, those two things happening at that, on that same day made it, he didn't go with his friends to get that, to get that retribution because he'd been called with a job offer earlier that day. It, it's so important that we actually offer folks legs up, that we actually offer people ladders, that we actually offer, you know, as, as Josh Payne said, things for people to do, places for kids to be. You know, the pandemic has made things harder, but we, we were already taking away things that kids could be doing before the pandemic happened. And I don't, I don't envy your, your position of having to figure out all of these things and figure out where money can go and where it can't. But I do appreciate you taking the time to hear people out. And I think people brought up some very, very positive and very hopeful potential uses for this money. But I just, I want to make sure that everybody realizes that any money that we spend that does any sort of, that takes away any of the percentages of bad outcomes, gun violence, deaths, things like that, is important. The last thing I'll mention is there have been a few people talking about the idea of gun buybacks. And I've always kind of dumped on that idea because I didn't think that they were particularly helpful. And I'd seen ones in other areas where people brought old muskets and things that didn't work anymore and things like that. But I've done a lot more research. I'd like people to look, if you can, do a, do a Google search. There's a great article called Gun Buybacks, What the Research Says. It's a compendium of a bunch of different information about these. And the greatest takeaway from it is that they don't help the way that you think that they help. People talk about, you know, people that are committing gun violence are not going to turn in their guns. Of course not. But people who are committing a lot of gun violence often are stealing guns. They're taking them from places that they can get them easily. And sometimes they're buying them. We can't, we can't fix all of that. But if you reduce the amount of guns that just happen to be in your community, you're reducing the amount of potential gun suicides. You're reducing the amount of potential kids finding guns and accidentally shooting themselves or a friend. You're reducing the amount of guns that can be stolen and used in a crime. So as I read more and more about this, it kind of flipped my own mind about it. And it has a way of, of reducing bad outcomes in a different way than people maybe are expecting a gun buyback program to work. But there are ways to do this. And as, as something that I literally happened to just have my mind changed on recently, I thought it was worth mentioning, that this might be something that we might want to look into. We have four law enforcement organizations within this community, which is a lot. And maybe working with them and trying to figure out ways that we can do something like that would be important. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Now, we are going to hear, are there any communications from the board? Mary King.
Hi, I've got to pull it up. I've got a letter that I've been asked to read in to the public record. Dear Mary King, I know I voted for you, so you must be my representative on the county board. There has been gun violence directed at the apartment buildings on Cottage Grove in Colorado. There has been gun violence coming out of the door across the street from me, a housing project. And there has been midnight gun violence from two cars battling it out in the Glenwood Oaks driveway. And none of these incidents was anyone killed, but you know about the gun violence that is going on and increasing among young black men in Champaign-Urbana and Rantoul. The answer to this is not more police action and more money for the jails. They can only mop up when the violence occurs, and more and more, they cannot get witnesses to talk. I have been volunteering at the local county jail for the past 10 years, minus the COVID time when volunteers have been and are still banned from the jail. In that time, I have slowly learned that young black men believe that street justice is the only justice. Because of the inability of the police and the courts to get convictions, convictions on many of the murderers, they have a culture of taking things into their own hands, and they feel very proud of it when they are able to exact revenge. Of course, for each revenge killing is another one required to avenge the last one, and on it goes. It is not directly the fault of the police. I have been advocating for community-based solutions such as drop-in centers for drug and alcohol problems, mental health interventions, and gang interventions by older ex-gang members, and places that would help people find jobs and housing. But right now, we have federal government money to fight violence, and the county board has to decide on a hunk of it. If that money all goes to the county jail and not to the local groups we have that have been doing the community work, as I alluded to, that would be a huge mistake. It would also be a betrayal of the massive energy of Black Lives Matter activism just to plow new money into the old institutions to do the same stuff. Please be true to your campaign for the county board that made me vote for you. Thank you, Barbara Kessel.
Thank you, Mary. Any other communications from the board? I don't, Jen, Jen Strapp.
Um, you had a letter from Anita Ng. Were you planning on reading that?
Go for it.
Oh, okay. Hi, Stephanie. I'm writing to formally add public comment for the county board finance study session on community violence. I'm hoping that some portion of our American Rescue Plan funding will be used to create a truly interactive street level, level map where community members would be able to report in gunshots or disturbances in real time, the general location or their own location when, where, when they heard it. Sorry. My experience is that on Nextdoor and Facebook and other social media, community members frequently post about shots heard or loud disturbances in real time with location information. But most of this sort of information never makes into any sort of collective database. It essentially evaporates and becomes hearsay. Still others, like my seeing a window with a new bullet hole, makes it nowhere. There is currently no real-time reporting mechanism for citizens, much less one arranged geographically. Data comes from police mainly, which only delineates what they themselves are involved in, a significantly filtered subset of possible information. The gun violence maps, and she gives the link, are excellent for research, but not close to real time and more focused on official deaths and injuries corroborated by police records. ShotSpotter is insanely expensive tech, but does not engage the community or create a learning context. It tends to blow up police funding without a good result. It would be helpful to know where community members experience the most gunshots disturbances, and then see which geographic locations intersect with what level and type of, of police activity or action. This kind of map with database is not really super challenging tech. I bet an undergrad computer science major could complete such a project in one semester. So it should not be insanely expensive. It ought to be a community drive project rather than a police project. I know that the PTAs have started discussing this due to reported violence near schools and wanted a crowd reporting mechanism to understand overall neighborhood use and consequence patterns better. There has been discussion whether such data would help provide evidence to support needed infrastructure projects, improving lighting around Garden Hills, especially around the school, was brought up. Also, motion detectors, plus or minus cameras in school neighborhoods. Please let me know if this seems like a reasonable idea to pursue. Many parents I know would be happy to see it at least enter a wider conversation. Thank you for all you do. Sincerely, Anita Ng, Unit Four parent.
Thank you, Jen. Mr. McGuire. Jim, go ahead.
Thank you. First, let me say that as someone who's been on the Justice and Social Services Committee for eight or more years, understanding the resources and programs and support we have across the community, I understand that there is a need for those programs. I would support them. Secondly, we're at a point in this community where the shootings and the victims are too many. And to say that jails and police officers doing their jobs can't help with that problem is short-sighted and leaves the community unprotected, which is a major responsibility of this county. Because we have the responsibility, the jail and the courts. People can't shoot up the community if they're in jail. And I'm tired of seeing 14-year-olds killed. So I'll go on. We really want to impact the violent crime in Champaign. We need to ensure that we direct ARPA funding prudently to those organizations that have proven record of positive results, that have some longevity and service to the struggling people in our community, and have the resources and staff to accomplish our goals. It's too bad that we haven't been given the opportunity to ask the presenters questions to determine if their programs have the capacity and continuing, continuing resources in general staff and trained staff to meet their stated goals. To respond to some of the questions and statements made tonight, mostly having to do with supporting First Followers' request for $2 to $4 million as they have also requested ARPA funds from the cities, as they have received funds from the county. We've already given them money. I'm not sure why we're, again, accepting those requests. We have programs and programs, programs throughout the community that are addressing many of the issues brought up tonight. We have the trained staff and organization and proven track record of success and can use that funding. We shouldn't duplicate those services. We're limiting our ability to provide housing. Of course, HACC and RPC does have housing, emergency housing. ARPA funds are short-term, so not sure how we would be involved in a long-term housing. The cities have $27 million and $18 million for streetlights and road improvements and their infrastructure. We have responsibilities, as I stated, they have responsibilities. They have the responsibility to take, take care of Garden Hills, and I used to live there. That the cities have, there, there may be more than $100 million coming into the county to, to address COVID, and that doesn't include the direct payments to families and individuals and additional unemployment payments, earned income tax credits, rental assistance, energy and water support. Beyond the many social programs that have wraparound services, just in general, we have all kinds of wraparound services and job training, Head Start, which is 10 hours a day. And all the families are, have access to needed wraparound services. Schools have assess, have support and wraparound service. The Youth Assessment Center has wraparound services. We have wraparound services for those that are incarcerated and those that return to the community jail, from jail and prisons, including our own reentry program. We have many organizations working on these issues of mental health, even beyond the mental health department, which provides millions in grants, including at least one for First Followers. There are other programs paid for by United Way Funds and RPC Grants. The community is already coming to, coming to gather to support those with behavioral, mental health illness that might end up in our jails. All of the law enforcement groups in the county have caseworkers to support those that may be picked up for a nonviolent crime, so they can receive mental health services, including Rosecrance has received federal funding of up to $8 million to address the issue of people that are, have a mental issue and may end up in jail. Of course, my greatest interest is to see the programs that we have supported. And those programs, unfortunately, that, like the Dream Program, which we did support. But unlike the programs that But unlike the programs that really don't have any real capacity or proof or staff and staff is hard to find now. We need to support those programs that we can pay for and help. It's not that we don't want to support programs. It's that we have to be careful about the funding that we have and where it goes. I'd like to know Marlon Mitchell is on 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 the on the call here if what first followers numbers are and their ability to perform the needed reporting requirements of ARPA. Whether they have how many people they've served in the last year, how many people have reoffended. Those sorts of issues to see if they have the capacity to do these, take on these responsibilities, especially when you're talking about more than $4 million that could go to other organizations.
Alright, thank you, Mr. McGuire. And again, we're in communications now and after that we'll be getting to the formal presentation part of the agenda, which we have not yet reached. Ms. Carter.
The one thing that I want to point out is how disconnected some of our board members are to what's really going on in our community. You want to make everything so personal. First of all, this is a community and we all need to do our part. You cannot single out one organization and question what they're doing. What are you doing? And how much money are you? Do you feel like it's gonna um, it's gonna help remedy this problem? There is not a price tag that we can put on this. And for you to keep on every meeting and say, oh, what a first follower was doing, what a first follower was doing. While witness for years, the footwork that this organization has put into this community. I have never seen you at any rallies, marches, vigils. Okay, you cannot put a price tag on remedy this problem. Another thing I want to point out, Ms. April Thomas. She just really touched my heart, really because our kids grew up together. And my inbox all the time, there are so many parents that have reached out to me. It's hurtful for me. I work at funeral homes part-time. I am servicing these babies in these cast. Okay, I know some of you guys don't, you're not affected, you're not affected. And then I I look and I hear your comments and your comments either even further tell me that you're not affected by what's going on. I have, I'm raising two black sons in this community. I've seen the the school system come at me. What do they want to do? They want to diagnose my kids with ADHD and put them on pills. I've seen law enforcement come at me, DCFS come at me. Being a black woman in this community trying to raise and and I want my kids to live just the same that you want for your kids. Okay, there are so many programs that I've watched dwindle throughout these years. And and who did they affect? The black community. Who is COVID affecting the most? The black community. Okay, so when I see and hear senseless conversations and comments, it's so hurtful to me. Because I don't know if you'll ever be affected by COVID or gun violence, but you know what? You better pray. You better pray that you're not. Okay, this is a community issue and we should combat it as a community. All of this pointing out the finger, you want to point the finger at the circuit clerk, you want to point the finger at first follow. It needs to stop. We're not making no progress. What can we do? We have the funds. We have the people out in the area doing the footwork. Let's give them what they need. You're not doing it. I don't see anybody out here raising their hands going to help with this issue. And we got people right here on this call that's been doing it. Okay? That's my two cents that I want to put in for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Thank you, Ms. Carter. I just, I want to remind everybody that the agenda part that we're on now is communications. So the goal of this part of the agenda is to communicate information that the board needs to know or correspondence that we've received from constituents. And then we're going to, we are going to get to the formal part of the agenda in which we're going to have a conversation. And how that's going to work, right? And so I I just, I I'm going to call on these last couple of board members and then I have a couple of communications, but I I just would encourage you to keep your communication short so that we could actually get to the formal presentation part of the agenda. I saw Mr. Summers next.
Thank you, Chair Fertato. I want to thank you for organizing tonight's discussion of community violence. Early on when we talked about the ARPA money, I had pledged that I would support a 10% floor in addressing this effort. We need to strike a balance of programmatic and brick and mortar projects on this and I'm looking forward to hearing from folks in the community as far as programmatic piece. I appreciate specifically the mentioning of activity centers and streetlights in Garden Hills as brick and mortar projects that I think we should strongly consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thorson.
Thank you, Stephanie. First of all, I think that Samantha passionately communicated where she is at and probably spoke for a lot of people that are listening to this call or on this call. I want to thank everyone in the attendees who came tonight. I want to thank all the people who sent multiple board members messages. I have one that was sent to me, perhaps it was only BCC to everyone else. It's short. I would like to read that into the record right now. This is from Carol Inskey. Greetings, my name is Carol Inskey and I'm a longtime resident of District 10, Mary. Though I'm writing as an individual, I also worked at the Urbana Free Library for over 25 years. It's been heartbreaking to see our community facing increased gun violence as well as so many other challenges that have been worsened by the impact of COVID. Poverty, mental health challenges and violence in relationships have also increased. Clearly, we need to do more if we want our community to be safe and vibrant place. Relying on police in prisons to solve these issues, as many police themselves will say, will never succeed. I urge you to support the use of the American Rescue Plan Funds to support community-based services in responses to these issues using an approach like the one recommended by first followers. This money could make a huge difference in the future of our community by helping those who are suffering and struggling the most. We can lift our whole community to be a safer, stronger community. Thank you for your consideration, Carol. With that, I look forward to the discussion part of the evening. And again, thank you everyone who participated so far.
Thank you. Leah.
Thank you, Stephanie. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good. I literally 30 seconds ago just had a constituent contact me from District 5 who is listening and watching on YouTube and they wanted to let us all know that they felt that Ms. Carter had communicated, this is a direct quote, she communicated something some of the board needed to hear quite well. And I wholeheartedly agree with that. Thank you, Ms. Carter, for speaking so passionately and so eloquently on a subject that most of us on this board don't actually know anything about. And I hope that we can learn how to deal with this appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few, Jenny Luction.
Hi, sorry, I just wanted to read one more letter into the record that was received this week from a Champaign resident. This is from Rebecca Motley. She says, I think I live in your District 6, although truthfully, I'll skip that part. She had moved and we found her new district for her, but in any case, I suspect he will both support first followers proposal regarding a community center. I will add my voice to this support. We must find creative ways to address this community violence. As a nearly 30-year resident of Champaign, I am dismayed to see the current trend. With the federal funding being provided, it's a great opportunity to support some solid proven organizations in this community such as First Followers, Business Elevator, Dream and others who are equipped to provide programming to work with our young people to give them more hope for the future. I have been personally involved with these groups as an advisor and supporter and I am fully committed to their visions. And that's it. Thank you.
I have also received several letters. I am not going to read all of them verbatim into the record because I do want to get us to the conversation part of this evening, but I am going to summarize them. To the members of the Champaign County Board, I'm a longtime citizen of Champaign, now retired from University Library. As you well know, the level of gun violence has skyrocketed in recent years and especially since the pandemic. We must use the resources we have and will soon get to address gun violence. There's no easy fix and it certainly can't be addressed just through more policing. We must start to address the systemic causes of violence by investing in the social and economic support systems for those in poor and underserved communities. And that is from Al Kagan and also make the full letters to the board in part of a future packet. My dear Emily and Stephanie, I'm writing you as a District A constituent regarding the American Rescue Plan Funds and how they are used to address violence in the county. As a peace activist for many years, I find heartbreaking and tolerable both the increasing gun violence and the ineffective criminal justice response to it. Give several thoughts about what could be done, especially at the end, he says, to the extent that we find violence in our community intolerable, let's be sure to put our own house in order. We must not reproduce the conditions of of a traditional jail and the violence built into its very design. Instead, we should aim to create systems of detention that preserve the health and safety of its residents by ensuring humane living conditions and adequate support services. I appreciate the long-term commitment you've both made to these issues and your willingness to consider alternatives. I'm hopeful that the American Rescue Plan Funds might give us an opportunity for new directions. Respectfully, Ron Costa of Urbana. I'm Patricia Marlowe. My husband and I are very concerned about the increased gun violence in our community. It was bad enough that the pressure cooker caused by COVID has exacerbated the situation. So far, this community has been unable to mitigate the problem, but we have a possibility to do something about it by accessing accessing the American Rescue Plan Funds to support a community-driven system of care to address the problem. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of this suggestion, Patricia and Myron Marlowe, who are in Champaign. And then finally, my name is Rachel Harden. I am Rochelle Harden. I am a Champaign County resident living in the Sawgrass subdivision. I wanted to reach out to the Champaign County Board members to express my gratitude that you are hosting study sessions on community violence and affordable housing. We are a very fortunate community. We have resources and caring, dedicated individuals who work to make our community better. Not all communities can say that. Skipping ahead, the members of First Followers convened several community leaders over the summer to address the problem of gun violence in the community. I was present at most of the meetings. What we discovered at the meetings is the community is in desperate need of wraparound services. The beauty of wraparound services model is that it seeks to help all residents, whether or not they have been directly impacted by gun violence. I thank you for caring about our community. I thank you for your service on the county board and I thank you for taking the time to read my letter. Rochelle Harden from Champaign, Illinois. And then I also received some of the other letters that have already been written into the record and what we'll do is we'll get all of them and make sure that everybody has access to them and that can read them in their entirety. I wanted to say, so what we're going to do now is we're going to transition into the formal presentation part of the of the meeting. And how we're going to do this is there have been community members that have been talking about this issue and specifically related to the ARPA funding and talking about this issue since the ARPA funding was announced in March. And the suggestion that I have is the purpose of these study sessions is for us to hear firsthand from people on the ground and have the opportunity to learn from them. So what we're going to do is we're going to hear from a group of people who have been participating in these conversations. Those people are Marlon Mitchell, Tom Moore, Dr. Regina Parnell and Dr. Parnell, I need you to accept when I oh no, you are, you are it, you are it. Okay, good. You're a panelist. Angie O'Neil, Richmond Hayes, Dr. Helen Neville, Dr. Gus Wood, Mark Pellmore and James Corbin. So we're going to, and we also have heard from some other folks who are part of these conversations in the public comment. What we're going to do, and I ask you all to respect this, in order to have an effective amount of time for this conversation, we're going to have them present. So as they present, if you have questions, if you could jot them down, we will do the Q and A after everybody has spoken. This is for two reasons. One, I anticipated that we would have a long public comment today and we did. But the other thing is some of their presentations are going to feed off of each other. So for example, Mr. Mitchell is going to speak first. We all might chime in and ask Mr. Mitchell 20 questions that the other speakers are going to address, right? So we're going to hear from everybody and then you could ask everybody questions. Also, there might be situations where, you know, you want to ask Dr. Neville and Mr. Moore question, a question, right? Or something like that. So that way you can decide who to ask your questions. So I definitely want the board to ask questions. I definitely want that board conversation and feedback. But first, we're going to hear from the folks that have been having this community conversation in our community. And we as a board are going to sit back and listen to what they have to say. So we're going to start with Mr. Mitchell, I believe is first. And Marlon, do you need to share your screen? Okay, I think you have that power, but let me.
I'll see you. It should work.
Okay.
Can I go?
Yeah, and from here on out, if you could just go from speaker to speaker and introduce yourselves as you speak, who you are, what organizations you're representing in the order that you would like to go in. I'm only going to chime in if for some, if somebody's on mute or something like that. So it's your show. Go for it.
So first of all, I'd just like to say thank you all for giving me this space, not only me, but also other folks that have been working alongside of me with this here particular initiative. And I want to preface this presentation with just saying that this is not a quote-unquote first followers presentation. It's just that we're facilitating a discussion, a much-needed discussion to come up with some of the resolutions or some solutions to what we are seeing and experiencing, not only here in Champaign County, but also across the university of, I mean, across the United States of America. So just bear with me as I try to get my screen to share. There's a few slides that I would like to share with you all. Okay, can everybody see that? Alright, so again, just thank you. Stephanie, Madam Chair, for allowing us this space and the rest of you all that sits on the board. So we want to have this community violence study session, right? So my name is Marlon Mitchell. I'm a PhD student at the University of Illinois, but I'm also the founding executive director of First Followers. So here's the presentation overview. So I'm just here to give you an introduction along with Tom Moore. And then we're going to talk to Dr. Regina Parnell. She's going to share some some information with you all and then Ms. Angie O'Neil. Then Mr. Richmond Hayes, Dr. Helen Neville, Dr. Gus Wood, and then Mr. Mark Pellmore and Mr. James Corbin. And as Stephanie mentioned, after the presentation, we'll just open up for Q and A because I've been sitting here since 6 o'clock and there's a lot of questions or at least I know there's a lot of questions that's floating in people's head and I just want to make sure that we're being clear and concise on what this project is all about. Alright, so so what we're calling this this particular proposal is H3 Coalition. So essentially, a coalition is a gathering of a group, like-minded individuals coming together to resolve issues. And so with this coalition, we're calling it Harm Healing and Hope. So we're in a day and age right now that we already know that the uptick in gun violence, community violence as a whole here in Champaign County has gotten way out of control. So there's a lot of people that are being affected by this. You've heard certain people on the call already that have expressed their their concern about the harm that it's causing. And I'm from the school of thought that it affects us all one way or another, whether you believe it or not. And then we're going to talk about the healing component of it. In order to for us to move forward and to resolve or re-trust the issues that we're talking about, there has to be some component of healing. Because at this particular time, there's very little hope in the African-American community because we see things are not going the way that they should go. the way that they should go, or it's getting way out of hand and out of control. So back in early May, we convened a group of community-based organizations to start to have this conversation about the community gun violence and the community violence as a whole. And so during this convening, we wanted to invite all to the table who had some skin in the game when it comes to providing services to marginalized communities. And so as we went into these meetings, one of the things that we asked ourselves, if it's not us, then who? And essentially, what that means is if we don't come up with the solutions or at least ideas to resolve to the problems that we're experiencing, then who? And if not now, then when? Me personally, I get tired of just sitting around just listening to a lot of the slip service that's going on without enough tasks being performed in order to redress what's going on in our community. And if not this particular initiative, then what? So those are three questions that we always came to the table trying to figure out or at least answer. And so we came up with this H3 Coalition. So essentially, H3 is a community development corporation. So it's an idea that has been around since the Civil Rights Movement. When you talk about CDCs, it was first implemented by the federal government in the late 60s by the Kennedys. And so essentially what it is, is an umbrella of agencies that come together and they resolve issues and they provide services to much-needed communities. And so in our proposal, what we're talking about is the different components or the different pillars of under this umbrella. And as we look through this, you can see that there's five pillars. There's counseling and support. There's general education, economic development, community outreach, and civic engagement. So these are five pillars that we start to meet as a coalition that we all want to address. And as you can see, each bullet point up under each pillar, there's certain services that come along with that. And as we all know, and I think some of the conversation that's been going on in this particular meeting is that there's a lot of people doing a lot of work in these different pillars. But the problematic area or the problems that we see is that everybody's looking or everybody's operating in silos. And the reason that we're working in silos is because of the funding streams. I think I heard one of the board members mention that some agencies are getting funded, some are not getting funded, some are underfunded. But at the same time, the idea is that I fully understand that, and we say, okay, well, why can't we just bring everybody to the table up under this particular umbrella so that everybody would get the resources that they need? And with the ARPA funds, $41 million coming to the county, and not only that, $25 million that's coming into the city of Champaign, for the city of Urbana, and another eight, nine million coming to the village of Rancho. We're all experiencing similar issues when we talk about community violence. So why can't we come together up under this umbrella and develop something in which everybody is getting what they needed because of intergovernmental support? It's not just that we're asking the county board, because we've already had conversations with each with the city of Champaign, the city of Urbana, and then also the village of Rancho. So with the CDC program, we've developed a timeline. So we all know that the ARPA fund's going to run out, it's going to run through current 2021 all the way to 2023. So we've got detail of what we want, what we would like to do in developing the CDC program. But this is just a snapshot of the three different stages that we're going to address. First and foremost, the first stage is developmental. That's the developmental stage. And what that means is since this is a quick turnaround, we talk about the ARPA funds because it's in many of the local governments' bank account, is that we need to develop what the CDC looks out for our particular county. And then moving into 2022, 2023, the second stage is the implementation stage. Now, the implementation stage is pretty much what the work that's already been done, that's being done on the ground with varying agencies, but they're just not provided with the necessary resources. So this is where we start to bring people in and start to run programs that we know that are effective. And then the third stage is the sustainability stage. So we know that the ARPA funds are going to run out in 2024. But one of the things that we want to do is explore the different funding opportunities that's out there, whether that's local, federal, state, or what have you, foundations, what have you. We want to explore that until the third stage of this of trying to provide a sustainability sustainability for the program. So we'll be looking and reaching out for different funding streams because me personally, I don't have a doubt, a shadow of doubt in my mind that the work that we're doing here in Champaign County is being done in silos, but there's great people doing great work. It's just that it's a capacity issue. And so when we talk about a CDC and the funding that is coming from the federal government to all the local governments, that shouldn't be an issue anymore because the resources are there and the work has to be done. And just being able to ramp up and build a capacity to enter agency capacity is critical at this particular time. Because as we see, you know, we have a lot of issues with this violence. It's spilling over our schools. We haven't even been in school a week, and there's violence every day inside the school, school districts. So the time is critical and the time is now. So with that being said, that's my portion of it. I'm willing to answer any questions that anyone might have before I leave. I just want to tell you, or I just want to share with you my experiences with community violence. Three years to the date of August 24th, my younger brother was shot and killed. Certain things you can't unsee. I watched him lying dead on the pavement with a bullet hole from a 40 caliber gunshot wound. So each and every time that I hear or there's a report of a shooting, my life is reset back to August 24th, 2018. With that being said, you have to ask yourself, at what point can I heal? Because I can't unsee what I saw. But at what point does my, do my family, myself heal? So this is a promise not only to my family, but it's a commitment to my community that we have to address this. And so this is why First Followers is involved with this. And we're not the only persons that are involved with this because it's a concern of a lot of different community members and organizations around town. So we're trying to bring everybody into this circle and develop a CDC so that we can redress some of the issues that we're going to see and we're going to continue seeing unless we take action now. So with that being said, I'll pass it over to Mr. Tom Moore.
Thank you, Marlin. And just like the previous speaker, I want to thank you, the board, for having this session and permitting us to talk to you. Listen, you see things and say why. But I dream things that never were, and I say, why not? You may think of that as a quote from Robert F. Kennedy, but in fact, it's actually from a George Bernard Shaw play called Back to Methuselah. "In a mechanical world, it is not uncommon that innovations are the product of those who operate the machines, those who do the work." This holds true in the human service and community development arena as well. Tonight, you have already heard about a much-needed innovation in working with those most in need of support to re-enter the community and to charter a productive life. The innovation is a one-stop human service project. Now, sit back, listen, and most of all, imagine. Champaign at this time is not unlike other cities. It has a crime problem and is suffering a gun violence epidemic that has been brewing for the last 30 or 40 years. First Followers, whose mission is to build strong and peaceful communities by providing support and guidance to the formerly incarcerated, is deeply troubled by this increase in violence. Because of the work that they have been doing for the last several years, they are uniquely situated to offer a community-driven intervention to address this dual problem, recidivism and growing gun violence. Their credentials, their credentials are experience, cultural knowledge, and commitment. First Followers has found that returnees they work with need immediate and intangible assistance, jobs, housing, and IDs. In addition, they find that many also are in need in psychological counseling around problems with post-prison trauma, services abuse, and social-emotional support. The first set of problems requires one set of skills, and the second requires a different set. Consequently, these providers find themselves making out referrals to train professionals to provide specialized counseling services. First Followers found that to be more effective and more efficient, they would benefit from a site where they could deliver both tangible and counseling services, essentially a one-stop site. The site, of course, would make them far more efficient. It is not uncommon for a returning to have to visit two or three different agencies before receiving the full array of services needed. It would be far more efficient if what was needed existed in one location. A location to deliver these services would solve the problem of clients having to go to multiple locations. Transportation would become less of a problem. Providing the same personal information and description would be eliminated. And most importantly, they would not face the intimidation, stigmatizing, and most likely that would occur with the same intake agent. Services will be for returnees and victims of gun violence. First Followers, with their unique combination of personal experience, that is, I have been in your shoes, can establish a trusting relationship with recipients. Procedural assistance to secure housing, employment ID, First Followers will have the necessary materials and equipment for returnees to begin their re-entry into community. Other services will be of a personal, psychological nature. The above same services will be available to those who experience gun violence along with a safe place to stay until they are prepared to relocate or return to their residence. Youth development will be a particular concern. For training, most First Followers will continue using a paraprofessional delivery model. However, they will also seek skill training from Parkland and the University of Illinois. Finally, First Followers will provide in this space the opportunity to systematically study the community it serves and become involved in community development to restore those social aspects that built a safe, productive community. Portions of this overall project have been building in our community for some time, but have lacked sufficient funding and have been more piecemeal than what you will hear tonight. On Thursday, August 19, 2021, in a news gazette article on local gun violence, the state's attorney noted that, in addition to law enforcement to change behavior, we need the cooperation, effort, and love and concern of witnesses and victims, community organizers, social services, and faith leaders, and the love and concern of family and neighborhoods to send the message that there is a better way. We need this project to reintegrate returnees, serve victims of gun violence, and regenerate our community. These funds from the American Rescue Plan will go a long way to achieve these goals, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I think next is Dr. Parnell.
Ms. O'Neal will speak before me. Could you allow her in?
I will allow her in. I thought I had everybody in. I will go get her. Okay. There we are, Ms. O'Neal.
Hello.
Hey, Ms. Angie. Go ahead.
All right. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, good evening. My name is Angela O'Neal. I've been a resident in Champaign County since 1992. And I come on the panel today because I'm a mother of four, one daughter and three sons, and my youngest son, Jeremy O'Neal, was shot and killed here in 2015. And it was, it was like the worst day of my life when you have to get that phone call and you have to, you know, make preparations to send back your child. And I didn't have nowhere to go. I was losing my mind. I didn't know what I needed to do. And a friend of mine referred me to First Followers. And when I went to First Followers, they was having support groups for parents who had, you know, went through gun violence and everything. And we referred me to Dr. Regina and we'll meet weekly, you know, to help each other get through this pain that went back.
Sorry, we lost you there for a second. Yes, now we can, yes.
Okay. So yes, back to what I was saying, that was, you know, to bury your son, you can't get that hood from no more. You can't do this and that. I didn't know which way to go. A friend of mine referred me to First Followers. And Marlin set up an appointment with me, and we all came together, a lot of parents in Champaign County that has lost their kids to gun violence. And I just thank God for their services. Dr. Regina, 24 hours whenever I needed her, she was there to talk to me, to, you know, get me right. I went something through trauma classes, grieving classes. And I have, you know, grandkids that's coming up in Champaign County that wants to go to the university, that wants to be part of this community. And I just think it's a good program for other parents to come in, and we can do the wraparound services for the kids, the grandkids, and for all. My great niece was just shot in her own house, 14 years old. Safest place you think you should be is in your house. And she was watching TV and was shot in her back here in Champaign County. So I just wanted to say I thank God for the First Followers' family, and they heard my cry and they sent me to the different services to help me and my family out. And I hope that we can extend it to other families in the Champaign community. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Angie. So the sleepless nights, not being able to eat, not function, not being able to cope. This is the new norms for a lot of families in our community. Our families are hurting. Being trauma-informed does not allow us to walk the path and feel the hurt, the pain, the suffering that these mothers, sisters, brothers, children, and other extended family members are experiencing. Yes, we need that trauma-informed training because it's helpful. However, having a different perspective of that term, trauma-informed, when you are a service provider who's been impacted by the trauma, that gives you a different trauma lens. That opens you up. That allows you to have that empathy, that compassion. And it gives you the will to go forward and to be there on those days that nobody else is open. Not that eight-to-five Monday through Friday, but that 5:00 PM to that 8:00 AM time slot, that Saturday and that Sunday. Being able to understand that attitude, behaviors, and responses, that that's that new coping mechanism that these families are dealing with. We must come together as a community to support these family units. And not just the family units. We heard from others how it's impacting their lives and garden heels. So we need to support the community as a whole with a wraparound approach with fidelity. With fidelity. Yes, this word is used loosely within our community. Everybody want to use this wraparound term. But wraparound is, the approach is to use it with fidelity to impact all nine lives, life domains within someone's life. To touch not only the person it has impacted, but the entire family unit, their community support. Having a community hub where families can come and gain the needed support in all their life domains is needed within the community. Although I'm a service provider, I've been impacted firsthand and secondhand by the community violence. And I live in St. Louis now. So I'm walking the same path as many of the families in Champaign are being, because I'm still heavily tied to them. Secondhand by supporting the families like Ms. Angie, April, and other mothers who either lost their sons or daughters to gun violence, or their child has impacted somebody else. or their child has impacted somebody else's life with gun violence. Firsthand, I've lost family and friends. Robert Brown, Damian Henderson, Rashidi Overshute, Darren Mitchell, and my own eighteen-year-old cousin who lived with me at the time of his death, Brandon Smith. All to community violence. So physically, I don't live there, but I'm impacted by the violence within the community. Right now, our families are hurting, our community is hurting. So it's vital to have a coalition such as H3 to be on the ground working intensively with these families, providing the support that they need for the new life that they have. For Ms. Angie, who no longer, although she says she's a mother of four, but she only has three living children. She has one child that couldn't deal with the death of his brother and we couldn't hold on to him tight enough. And he's now incarcerated because of gun violence, because he didn't have that support. So providing that fidelity of wraparound, being available to these families outside of that eight to five, but giving them that twenty-four seven support that they need is what we need in our community. But if you never heal from the hurt that you've encountered, you will bleed over the people who did not even cut, cut you. And this what's going on in our community. These young people are hurting. They're bleeding within. And they're just out doing whatever they can to try to revenge someone's death, to, to try to hide the hurt that they're hiding, having, and just to protect themselves because they know no other way. We need H3 to help them with their hurt, to help them heal, to help them be whole again. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Richmond Hayes and real quick, I just, I just want to take a beat because the speakers that came before me, it's real heavy. And I don't know if, if anybody else feels that, if you're, you know, used to hearing stories like that, but things like that, when you hear stuff like that, it never seems to miss a beat as far as the heaviness that you feel. So I just want to take a minute really quickly. Okay. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Richmond Hayes. I'm a PhD student in the Counseling Psychology Program at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. And more importantly, I'm a member of the Champaign community and a volunteer with First Followers. I research strengths-based approaches to restoring Black individuals, families, and communities who have been affected by the criminal legal system. Currently, I'm conducting a study which seeks to understand how we can use radical healing and radical hope to transform our community. From this perspective, I want to briefly speak on the importance of healing. So I know we, we've heard a lot of, of testimonies from community members. And it sounds like we just need to acknowledge the fact that harm has been done in this country. Negative messages about the humanity of people of color are part of the history and the cultural fabric. And that comes at a cost. Research is telling us that discrimination and racism has adverse effects on communities of color, like poor physical health, poor mental health, and psychological distress. Not to mention that, that experiences of racism can produce racial trauma, which can impact individuals psychosocially in the form of weakened community relationships. So what is healing and what does it mean? Generally, healing is a positive term, but depending on who you're asking, definitions of healing might disagree. Most often, healing is associated with physiological and behavioral improvements that can be characterized by an individual's triumph over some sort of suffering. Although traditional, this individualistic definition of healing does not recognize the connection to the community that people of color thrive within. So instead, I believe what's needed is a framework that brings healing and the community together in a radical way. And I use the word radical because complete change is necessary at this point. The status quo needs to be challenged. We need a well-resourced, coordinated system of care driven by members of the impacted community to address the issue of community violence. Healing from racial trauma, healing from community violence, and healing from community gun violence are radical acts. Therefore, a move needs to be made beyond just the traditional notions of psychological healing, such as individual psychotherapy. And we need to take an intersectional approach that builds upon the cultural methods of healing in the, in the Champaign community. This process of radical healing that I'm speaking of starts with critical consciousness, which includes awareness of oppressive systems, but also social action. Consciousness leads to envisioning the possibilities of a better future and the second process of fostering radical hope. And hope is a courageous act because in the face of this oppression that people of color are facing in the United States, it requires strength, it requires resistance, and it requires cultural authenticity. Finally, to go back to this idea of breaking away from the focus on the individual throughout this process of healing is the acknowledgement of collectivism. The view that my psychological and mental health is tied to all of yours. In conclusion, healing is important because it's what's necessary in order for us to become whole, to transform environments, and to promote joy-filled lives that I know we all want. One way of thinking about healing would be in terms of this radical healing that I'm talking about. And radical healing is just a process whose end goal is restoration. This restoration is achieved by individuals and communities focusing on and building upon their strengths as well as addressing challenges. Healing is a community endeavor. And radically healing, the radical healing framework emphasizes that it's our collective responsibility to mend the soul wounds that we're spoken about literally throughout the whole entire session. The soul wounds, the historical wounds, and to heal from the harms that people have clearly experienced. This increase in violence, especially gun violence during the pandemic, is calling us to act, and I think we can all see that. And in that plan of action, I would urge the county board to remember the importance of healing. Thank you.
I believe I'm next. Thank you so much, Richmond. I also want to pay respects and honor the people who have spoken before me. The powerful words, I'm still struck with the pain. I kind of feel that, but thank you so much, Ms. Angie, Ms. April, and Dr. Regina for sharing your stories. It takes a lot to come and, and be vulnerable and to speak. And I think it's important that we bear witness to that pain and that we listen and hold on to that. So thank you for sharing that. I also want to thank the First Followers and other organizations that are on the ground that are doing the work to attend to this pain. And these are the things that I think the city needs to invest in and should be engaged in. My name is Helen Neville. I am a professor at the university. I'm a counseling psychologist. I do research. I've been involved with this Sea Hearts program on campus, which is community healing and resistance through storytelling. I've been involved with youth participatory action research where we have worked with youth around gun violence and understanding their perceptions and what they think should be the solutions. And I've been interested in ideas about healing and community healing. And when we've come and talked to community members, community members inevitably say we need healing. And that is one of the reasons why the H3, H3 program, I think, begins to address this. As we've learned from many of the presenters earlier, the issue of gun violence and community violence and healing is complex, and there is no simple solutions. It involves structural issues, it involves trauma, it involves individual and community issues. And I think H3 is one of the only programs that is beginning to tackle all of that. In their program, they've identified five areas that are really is, not only is it a one-stop shop deal, but it's an integrated approach, a total person approach in which they are looking at the individual within the community. And that is really rare to see that it is trauma-informed and culturally responsive. I know that there are a number of places that claim to be trauma-informed and culturally responsive, yet folks really don't have the training and lived experiences to make that happen. As was mentioned before, what do we really mean by trauma-informed? We're talking about six primary areas. Safety, trustworthiness, and transparency. Peer support, collaboration and mutuality, empowerment and choice, and cultural, historical, and gender issues. And the H3 has incorporated those components throughout these five dimensions. The first dimension is really looking at counseling and support. And this is so critical, as many of you, as Richmond said. I'm a psychologist. I know that the American Psychological Association has documented, as well as the research, counseling is effective. People who participate in counseling, we know that it reduces depression, anxiety, substance use, and there's many ways in which counseling and so these types of support services can be delivered. It can be an individual kind of service, but also group services. And then, as was mentioned earlier, there can be peer services. And peer counseling and paraprofessional counseling are also incredibly effective at providing people relief, promoting well-being, and reducing distress. These are really important, particularly if they're operating from a culturally informed or responsive way. The empirical data documents that when cultural dimensions are addressed within counseling, that African-Americans have better outcomes. And so paying attention to that is incredibly important. The other area is looking at general education. So not only are we going to deal with individual trauma, trauma with the family, helping families and people and the community process some of the trauma they've experienced. We also want to get to some of these structural issues. So the other factor is looking at general education, working with people to get their GED. This is incredibly important because we know that having a GED increases income opportunities. It increases self-esteem. Folks who get GEDs also provide role models for the community, and it opens doors for folks. In terms of the GED, high school diploma, that increases hourly income and that itself reduces rates of crime in communities. Looking at economic development is the third factor. And many times, this is not even considered. The economic development thinks, focuses on issues such as financial literacy. And sometimes people erroneously think that working-class people or poor folks are not interested in financial literacy. And that is totally not accurate. This would really help folks understand savings, the importance of that, getting financial well-being, how to avoid debt, and to protect themselves in the long run. The economic development also considers, and some of the things that people were talking about were the skilled training courses. And this is critical because we're providing people, you know, a future is essentially, things for them to do. I know in talking to the young people, they want opportunities and things for them to do. Sometimes going to college is not on everybody's list. It's not what they want. But they also want to have a good job where they can take care of their family. And providing these skilled training opportunities and setting people up with internships and long-time jobs will assist with that. That helps with job security and satisfaction, self-improvement, financial security. Just like the powerful story that someone told earlier about somebody getting a good job offer that really deterred them from getting involved with something that would have been not as productive in terms of their long-time, long-term future. So we know that jobs themselves help reduce community violences. The other piece that is really important is the community outreach. And these are things that I think that First Followers and other groups have done a tremendous job of having these community outreach people, people on the ground, making those connections, wanting to see what are the needs of the people? How do we address these? And then implementing data-informed interventions. But if you don't have people from the community, of the community, listening to the community, no matter what you do, the interventions are not going to be as effective and will not be maintained in the long term. And the last component is this area of civic engagement. And we see civic engagement operating right here in terms of people coming to testify, to write letters, to want to make an impact on their community because their voice matters. This, our democracy depends on this. So it's really critical that part of our health and well-being is to make a commitment to developing people that want to take part of this democracy building. Civic engagement consists of really having people name, understand, and develop an awareness of the critical issues. I know that Richmond talked about these, what are the root causes of these issues? And those root causes, you can't just understand what's happening now. Tom Moore, Dr. Moore, talked about having a long-range view. And so having the education and to help people develop this more critical analysis and understanding about our history, the complexity of that, to also understand the root causes of issues is really important. And that understanding of cultural knowledge actually increases educational outcomes. It increases self-esteem. It increases mental health outcomes. So it has that other piece to it, too. Civic engagement, in addition to this awareness of these critical issues, also has a notion of developing a sense of efficacy. And that is that, you, do you know what? Your voice matters and you can make a difference. Many times when you talk to people, they're not really sure, sure, anybody. I talk to people in the classes I teach aware that they can make a difference with their voice, especially when they act in collaboration. And then assisting people in developing the civic engagement skills to participate in politics and voting and other kinds of ways to make their voice heard. All of these, again, are incredibly important to have the kind of impact that is going to, is needed. When you think about money, four million or whatever, is not a lot of money considering what is happening in our communities and the opportunity that people have to make a real sustained difference with people who are hurting. Thank you.
So I'll jump right in now. Just want to say thank you to everybody that's here. Thank you for having us present. My name is Gus Wood. I am a professor in the Labor Education Program at the University of Illinois. I've been a resident of the area going on ten years now. My purpose, why I was brought here today to speak is because of my research and organizing background that I focus on strategic development of what scholar Alden Moore has called local movement centers. Because that is what is being proposed here today. We'll talk about a one-stop-shop community center. And the way, the reason I use the term local movement center is because what we're offering has a multitude of purposes that both reinforce power, but also provide services that strengthen neighborhoods and communities. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to outline very briefly, because of my time, the mission and vision of community centers historically, and also provide a case study of where this actually occurred and how it was developed and how it grew over time to show that this is something that has concrete evidence of actually working. to show that this is something that has concrete evidence of actually working in multiple places, but the example I'm gonna use is one that shows literally building from the ground up. So historically, the purpose of community centers is to provide a resource specifically center where all the residents of the areas can access services. They can have a place to meet and to also hold activities to improve their collective capacity, as Dr. Neville spoke about, to address both their immediate and their long-term needs with a commitment specifically to low income and what we would typically term subjugated peoples, the African-American working classes, the Latinx working classes, et cetera. And there's typically three nodes to a community center. Uh, historically, organizing, advocacy and service. And so while we're talking a lot about the, the um social crises that are predominantly been going on since the pandemic began, what community centers typically try to do is act in an offensive measure, meaning they provide proactive services that will deal with all the immediate issues, social crises that are occurring in that space at that time. But they also create kind of a buffer or foundation to deal with crises as they come along in the future. So this is of course future planning or future-proofing neighborhood strength and people power. Um, community centers typically aim to be a place where organizations and community campaigns can be built and supported internally, which means that all of the building that's going on within a community center happens to be something that doesn't necessarily need external interference from other spaces. Because over time, it builds itself to where the neighborhood can support itself over time. Now, of course, that doesn't happen at the beginning, but that's what occurs after years of the center growing its services. They are places where members of the community typically seek out services or references to other agencies that can serve their needs. Um, to support organizing and serving the community. Community centers typically provide education, training and advocacy for the community to participate and sustain themselves. But community centers must be, are are very clear, historically, they, they are not about strictly social action or social services as isolated strategies outside of one another. In other words, they are neither are sustainable without the other. There's a reciprocity in the way community centers have to operate. The development of any type of social action through organizing with the residents in the community center and the neighborhood will help maintain and support the social services so that they grow within the community over time. So there's a reciprocal nature that allows people to have to be empowered to work for their community center in their neighborhood historically. And it's led to a more unified neighborhood, it's led to more participation amongst things that are happening. And there will always be a need for more services for those types of communities. And the way to make sure they are provided is to build the capacity of the community via these services. And as is the case with, I'm gonna talk about briefly here, Excelsior, which is a working-class Filipino-Filipina community in San Francisco. They brought their residents together, they broke down pay differences and beefs, and they established a kinship among the people to have a whole accountability and responsibility to keeping that space growing. And so the space I'm speaking about is called the Filipino Community Center, which is in San Francisco, which was built in two thousand and four, in the neighborhood called Excelsior. Now, what Excelsior is historically, it's been a working-class Filipino neighborhood that faced a lot of issues we talk about here in Champaign today. They faced employment issues, low pay in particular. They were over, there was overcrowding due to a lot of family consolidation, a lot of uh undocumented people coming into the neighborhood from um migration. And there were tensions between those groups and a lot of it did end up resulting in violence. And so that became a big issue when in two thousand and four, a core group of those residents developed a survey to where they went around the neighborhood and they got all the information in relation to what are the needs of the community at the time. And you, and based on who they were, they chose specific things. They talked about not having any physical space to deal with these kinds of conflicts or know how to get resources. Over eighty percent of the residents in the neighborhood had no idea where to go for any type of services, either basic or complex. And so what they ended up doing, they developed the central hub that they created a center of for disseminating information for particularly for the women and young girls in the or in in the neighborhood. They wanted a space for childcare, for teen after-school programs, cultural events, leadership training and vocational and college prep. Um, the men said they wanted a space to be, as some of you call, interrupters, to where they can hash out a lot of the violent beats that were causing the uproars in the neighborhoods. And so, uh, but they all mentioned that the center must be a way to bring this community spirit together by holding everybody accountable to working towards the center's growth over time. So what they did was they ended up renting a space from the Presbyterian Church in December of that year with the goal of creating what they call an intentional community instead of a coincidental community, being proactive in dealing with problems that could arise versus being reactive and just trying to shield when something bad happened. And so they accessed social support networks from different residents in the community who volunteered their time before they were able to afford paid staff. They had uh Centers for Gravity for the Filipino pa- uh population. They look for social capital mechanisms. They hosted supportive workshops for domestic violence survivors. They created an education curriculum. They, 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 they opened the counseling center. And all the other things I listed beforehand, they were able to implement over time because of the idea that we have representatives in the neighborhood who can deal with these issues. And so here's what we're gonna contribute because this is our space, this is our center. And so I, again, I'm normal with time, so I'll stop, I'm gonna stop in a few seconds. But that's just something that we have to consider, that there are examples of instances where community centers were brought in as intervention strategies where the working-class communities dealt with the same issues we're facing in Champaign today and they were able to alleviate and strengthen their neighborhood by empowering the people through a neighborhood community center that offered services, but as a reciprocity forced the residents to be accountable to social action, to uphold those services and to build upon them over time. And so I'll stop there and pass it on. Thank you for allowing me to speak, but the, there are, there is potential for this work that we've seen.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Mark Kellmore. I'm the CEO of Business Elevator. I'm gonna share my screen right quick. Can you hear me? Oh, there we go. So, um, the slide that you're looking at, it's taking a long time to image. Uh, the slide that you're looking at is the hot zones of Champaign, uh, Brana, um, more specifically Champaign. And you're probably wondering, uh, what does business have to do with community violence? Uh, in response to the lady who wrote the letter in about uh maps and all that stuff, here's an image that shows you the hot zones of violence in our community. The uh red area that is in the blue that is uh between Douglas Center, which is Wright Street and about Fifth Street. The other red spot is uh Springfield, which is um the Gramercy and the Country Brook. And then the other cluster of yellow and reddish, that is Garden Hills. So from a business perspective, we're looking at ownership. So um in Champaign County, there's a two point two percent whether it's a black-owned or minority-owned of uh the over sixteen hundred businesses. And we have a thirteen percent population. So that's a, a kind of a outbalance. And then from an educational standpoint, in the uh Champaign County over the last two to three years, there was fifteen thousand degrees. And black males ages eighteen to twenty-four were only six hundred and eighty-seven, which is about a five percent. So um no, low to no businesses, low to no education. And then from a crime perspective, um, the Champaign County is eleven out of a hundred index. So that's one out of one hundred and seven is gonna be a crime victim. So putting all those numbers together, from a business perspective, how do we attract businesses? How do we grow businesses? How do we create economic development? And that is what Business Elevator, which is a five oh one C three, our mission is to change the landscape of minor minority-owned micro businesses or businesses to the point that disadvantaged neighborhoods become communities. And to Mr. Santos' point earlier, uh, we focus on three things from a overall perspective. And that is, we need to cultivate people's uh heads, which is informational. We need to arouse people's hearts, which is motivational. And then we need to impact people's space, which is developmental. And that combats the structural uh violence. But we also know that inside that structural violence, it creates less opportunities for economic development, which specifically in my perspective is business development. So how did I get involved? Well, one of the things that I speak on as part of the H three is the actual hope. And in order to have hope, you need to either be totally invested in something, own something or be a stakeholder in something. And with the low education, the low business startup and then the violence potential, there's not very much hope. So in order to create hope as part of this initiative, we're bringing the program of entrepreneurship. So one of those uh pillars that uh Ms. Neville talked about was the economic development, which is what we're good at, what we're uh, what we're doing right now in the community and what we have the capacity to do. A couple of other things that I would like to talk about is from all of the stuff that is happening in our community, there's a couple of things that we're missing. And that is the trust in certain things. So in, in the missing of trust, we have created a couple of gaps. The first is the wealth gap. The fewer businesses we have in these troubled areas, the fewer people are gonna wanna stay in those areas. So we're gonna have transition happening all the time, which creates a unknown of who moves in, who moves out, and that creates a whole nother vacuum. And then the second one is a credit gap. In these areas that we have highlighted on the map, there is not one single bank. And if it is a bank, it's a small community bank that typically does not make economic or financial loans to the low-income families surrounding that particular bank. And then the third one is a trust gap. Because of the uh structural and institutional um racism and problems that we've had historically that Mr. Moore talked about, this is an establishment that we have to break in order to move forward. So that starts with the healing, but you have to create hope as those peoples heal. So one of the things that these gaps are creating is barriers. And that is uh barriers to capital, barriers to social equity, barriers to uh business contracts, best barriers to financial assistance. And then we don't have a cultural um environment of entrepreneurship. So one of the things that I wanna point out is as a business owner, I am all about understanding how my community, how my community operates, what is happening in my community, in any way I can help, I am all forward. So I just want to give those few points to you. Uh, thank you for your time and I'll unshare my screen.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, I'm having some little instability here with my internet, so I'm gonna just speak. Uh, my name is James Corbin. I'm a resident of Abana. I'm also a uh community navigator and also.
James, we lost you there for a second.
Also a resource specialist, where I do a lot of our, can you hear me? Okay. Yeah, keep, I'm sorry, the interconnection is bad. But what, what Mark is proposing is with uh Business Elevator, Elevation Station is an incubator focused on the needs of the different, the structures faced by black indigenous people of color, which he outlined, those three basic areas. And uh it's a great article, you can read it. The article is from Huffington Post and it is white entrepreneurship. And basically entrepreneurship is a powerful vehicle for economic change. One that can and does make a difference for many communities. Researchers discover that the wealth gap between black and white adults decreased from a multiplier of thirteen to three through small business ownership. And again, that feeds back into what Mark was talking about, that having that stake and that hope within a community to build economically, which is very, very important and critical. Uh, what Mark is proposing with Elevation Station would be a uh business development program such as workshops as well as panel discussion. The five area of financial literacy, which is another term just tossed around. There's five critical areas that need to be uh, you know, elaborated on as well as structure, environment and curriculum and leadership development as well as with the young men and women. That's some of the things. And again, just a simple goal would be uh for this center to focus on creating, help to create two percent more of by black indigenous people of color, businesses and establishment within the Chi- Champaign County area. Because right now, those services are not being attended to. Now, that's not taking anything away from any other organization. It's just understanding that grassroots effort and community, community groups such as this developed because of fissures and cracks that are in the system. But at this time, we're seeing a great spread with these fissures due to COVID, so. And with that, I wanna transition into me being a service provider in this area. So speaking as a resource navigator and service provider, I work with a lot of individuals um who come to me with a multitude of problems. It's not just one, you know, just getting a job is not one, it's always a gamut of problems. And I see a disconnection between referral time um with each agency. So that's the issue, this disconnection or where do they find the service at? If it wasn't for somebody like me as a navigator in these, in this area doing this, a lot of these people don't know where to start. That's why we propose this one-stop center, which will house a lot of these different agencies in one area that can all work together as one. The H three model is a CDC model or a community development model. And we offer again, it's one-stop shop to counter the rise in violent crime. But it's a collective effort to face these issues that we face. We also wanna focus on uh, we wanna focus on programs that are proven, not just evidence, we want evidence-based program to help fight and counter these issues. Now, um, we experiencing a lot of the violence is actually contributed to um systematic racism. Ken Salvo touched on this earlier, uh, when he was speaking. And now we're seeing the results of this within the community. That's why we figured that this one-stop shop or this H three model goal is to offer faster response times between agencies as well as uh help crisis moments, help families in crisis, better healing sessions for families in need. Regina Parnell, Dr. Regina explained this a lot. She said, like she said, stated earlier, we use that, everybody, you know, says wraparound, but it's not at a whole person approach. And it's a buzzword that's not actually being evaluated carefully. Regina used the term fidelity. And we need to understand how that works with this wraparound approach. That is very critical. These families in need needs results fast. These families in need needs results fast, results within, you know, matter of seconds, especially dealing with this violence. Also, to help prevent violence, we're looking again at creating programs within this community center that will help these young men and women determine direction. You know, like like uh someone stated earlier, somebody who had a job, oh, that was Helen, who stated that he had a job and he, you know, that turned him away from going through um some type of crime or anything. Having that outlook and that outreach is critical in uh decision making. And it was a letter also stated by Barbara, who understanding the culture, that these young men are, one, acting on fear. You know, this is fear, this is, I I gotta get you before you get me. And this whole attitude needs to change if we're gonna do this. So what's proposed in this model again? We wanna understand what's here. So we got five areas, which is counseling and support. Then we got general education, which is very needed at this time that these individuals get a education. And 'cause we know that education has a lot to do with crime and violence. Low education, low hanging fruit, they are taking advantage of these. The third is economic development. That's what Mark and myself come in at, what we gotta bring in. We gotta teach these business skills, gotta teach these financial skills. We gotta teach skill sets that will build wealth and then be a long-term thinking instead of moment-to-moment thinking. Then there's the uh community outreach section. That is very critical, that's what I do. We need more of that in the area. But it need to be organized within each one of the groups, and finally civic engagements. These five areas must be all put together and work as a collective. Basically, what we are producing is, and uh we talked about this, is a system, a system to go against systematic racism. That's what we're proposing here. You know, one stop shop is a system. We come together as a group and form the system. And this will have the uh results that Gus was speaking about earlier, Mr. Gus Woods, with his model. We could have those same results here. And we could see a turnaround in a lot of this violence that we experience it right now. Now, this violence is not just here. This violence is everywhere, it's in every community. But again, we're seeing now the cracks have turned into fissures, and they wind it up into uh you need a bridge to almost cross this thing now. And we're seeing that more and more. Now, personally, I'm gonna speak personally, and I'm gonna turn on my camera for this, but if it break up, I apologize. I gotta see, hold on. You got it? Okay. Personally, I have experienced gun violence. I was shot at age, I just turned twenty-four years old. And I was shot, left for dead. This is my personal experience. There was nothing there for me. And until you understand, or until you been in my shoes and laying on that concrete and looking up at all the METs trying to bring you back to life in the hospital, you know, wondering if you gonna make it the next day, and you hearing doctors tell you, no, he might not make it. Y'all need to go in there, go pray for him, send a preacher up in there, y'all got a preacher? You know, you don't understand that. You you don't, only only somebody who's been touched by this could actually understand this. And then finally, the next stage is your family. I got two sons. They were three and five, coming to the hospital visiting me. And they was telling them, say goodbye. You know, that's trauma. Did I ever heal from that? No, I'm still healing. I use a wheelchair. I got a three fifty-seven slug in my back and an L one. I go through pain mentally, spiritually, and physically. Every day, this never ends. Now, where do I find these services at? I'm out here. And it's still difficult, and I'm a person that's out here doing this type of work. This is why we proposing this one-stop solution for the community. This is a grassroots initiative that we wanna do for the community. And with that being said, I'm I'm gonna leave it there. And I thank you all for listening to our presentation. And I hope that we somehow either, you know, touched you in one way or the other. I thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you to everybody who spoke tonight, both in the formal presentation and in the public comments and in sending in their letters. Um, I really appreciate it. And I especially appreciate the willingness um to share your personal experiences um very, very much. So now there is an opportunity, if the board has any questions that they would like to ask of the presenters. Samantha.
Um, I just had a question as far as, uh, first I have a comment. First followers, I guess I I really, I I like, what's the word I'm looking for? I can relate to you. Why? Because I've been down that road. I've made wrong choices in life. I have a criminal background, you know? And I look at those people that were in my life during that time that made me think differently. 'Cause it's all about your frame of thought. Okay? So I can relate to you. Every time I hear one of you guys speak, I know plenty of friends that have been through that program where I I know I've been there. And so that's why I thank God for your your organization, because you give people that outlook, the criminal ju- uh the criminal system. Okay, so you went and did your time, and then you come back out here. And then, oh yeah, you paid your 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 dues, and you went to jail, and you went to prison. Okay, but then you get out here, and then employers look at you and say, well, they're still automatically gonna hold you against those wrong decisions that you made. Okay? That is the number one reason why I chose entrepreneurship. Why? Because nobody can tell me, no, I'm not gonna hire you because of what you did when you were nineteen years old. Okay? Those records stay with you your whole life, right? So I can relate to First Followers, because I am not perfect. Like, some people claim that they wanna uh uh present themselves to this world. I'm not perfect. I've made bad choices in life. I thank God for my different frame of mind and the people that were in my life during those times that made me see a different outlook. Because the world does not give me a nice picture, a beautiful picture uh of how I can live my life. Okay, secondly, if we do give you guys this grant money, do you have accountants in place that can give us the reports and the criteria that we need? Um, you know, with the reporting standards? I just wanted to know, are you working with an accountant? Or do you have someone in place that can give us those reports that we need? And that's all I needed to say.
So the way that we have this structured, so we're uh we're vying for a uh, you know, a coalition. I can say with First Followers, yes, we have record keeping, because we have other grants that we report to. But the magnitude of money that we're asking for and the amount of uh organizations that we would like to recruit and be a part of the coalition is just like any other entity. That's things that you bring in as you start to develop what this is supposed to look like. And so through contract tool, or just putting out a call for folks that does that, that do that type of work, that's 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 what the plan is.
Other questions? Mr. McGuire.
Thank you. Um, first, my heart goes out to the people that have uh made comments about the tragedies in their lives. Um, also have had some tragedies in my life also. Um, that's probably why I'm so involved in the programs and social issues to support families that wanna change. And why I wanna make sure I see this funding go to address those issues. And that we have organizations that have a track record and have accountants, know how to report to state and local and federal governments, what they're doing, how they're doing it, and provide the data. Um, I've heard a lot of discussion, I think very many of the points were made were very good. And they're things I've heard many times at different meetings that I've attended. But I've also heard these same words in, say, the Youth Assessment Center, and I'll read that. Your Youth Assessment Center serves as a primary center for intake screening, service connection for Champagne County youth and families. Case managers screen at-risk juveniles and link them, link them and their families with the community's support and restorative services. Law enforcement personnel typically make referrals to the Youth Assessment Center as alternative to prosecution and to prevent further delinquent activities. The Youth Assessment Center considers station adjustments, charges, police officers, or school officials recommend donations, family input, restorative justice methods. These include court subversion services to restore the relationship between the juvenile offenders, their victims, and the community mediation and peer courts. Restorative justice is a theory of justice that emphasizes repairing the harm caused by criminal behavior. It is best accomplished through comparative processes, including all stakeholders, holders. This can lead to transformation of people, relationships, communities. Goal of Youth Assessment Center is to connect youth through resources that help them to be resilient, resourceful, responsible, restored and positive community involvement through prompt assessment services, recommendations, and follow-up. Economic development was mentioned. In addition to a high quality of life and exceptional cultural opportunities, Champagne County provides a positive environment for business to succeed. The RPC's Economics Development Dis- Decision Division actively promotes the growth and development of Champagne County by encouraging the assist and assisting retention, expansion of existing business, attracting new commercial industrial development, improving the quality of life for citizens. Major activities and services, the Economic Development Services Division include generating coordinating economic development activities, expanding counties' commercial industrial tax base, assisting new and existing business development, representing the Department of RPC and Economic Developmenters and neighboring communities, the Economic Development Corporation, the Chi- County Chamber, Department of Commerce Economic Opportunity, managing economic development, finance programs, providing the region with tax increment finance district entrance. Job services. Um, basic services are completely open to the public to assess these services. Walk in or call any of the regional work orders, or they provide orientation, a great opportunity to learn about services, job search resource rooms, job fairs, individual services, individual assistance, career assessment, looking for work unsure about type of job persons. Uh, we will grant scholarships, assistance to attend local training programs to get skills and obtain professional certification, job clubs, series of workshops, youth services programs. If you are between ages fourteen, twenty-four, you should apply to one of these programs before seeking eligibility through workforce uh youth service programs. Why I don't disagree or don't understand what you're trying to promote, um, these are just a few of the programs that we have in this county. And they're separated, you want to have a community uh center. They're separated because the funding sources are separated in many cases. The groups are separated in some cases. It doesn't mean they're not doing job training for all types of different people or locations. Uh, Head Start and all those programs are throughout the county. But with these programs, they have the capability, the people, not saying that you're not qualified, good people, it's that they already have all those resources. They have the people that know best practice. They have the access to mental health services. Um, they have the ability to accountability to uh to make sure the funds aren't taken back after we spend two or three million dollars. Um, they have the ability to get more funds. They have the ability, the grant writers, all those services. And I think I I just, I I understand, and I think First Followers um provides a great service to a a community. But I don't know that you've got the framework to provide that same assurance that the dollars that we spend serve the young people, families in this community to um do the same level of service that we already have programs to do. And I don't wanna lose kids. I'm tired of losing children or babies, just people my family presents them as. I don't know if, you know, what else you wanna try to provide, but I'm sorry, I just can't see directing funds somewhere else that could address greater and greater needs in our community. Thank you.
Would any one of the presenters like to respond to Mr. McGuire?
I can touch on some, and somebody else can chime in if they would like. I would like to say, yes, RPC is a um a foundation within our community. And they have been for quite some time. However, those, the young people that's involved in this community violence is not being um serviced right now um by RPC. Because if they were, the crime rate, the community violence would not be on an uprise. We are trying as community liaison, as community members, as community people that live amongst these young men and these other individuals with this community violence, we're trying to use our expertise to catch them. Because each one of us that spoke tonight, we have relationships in some form, fashion with these families that um these young men are coming from. We're in the community, we're doing the labor. They're seeing us in our local grocery stores, in the corner stores, in our neighborhoods, walking, talking to each one of them. They're seeing us, they relate to us, they understand us, and we understand them and the pain that they're going through. I have nothing against RPC. I've worked uh fifteen years at the Regional Office of Education, working side by side with Darlene and other individuals within her agency. Although I worked for the Regional Office, I still did volunteer work in the afternoon, because I knew the services that I was providing eight to five was not enough for these young people. They need us after hours, they need us in their communities. They need us when they need us, and that's not from eight to five. A lot of these young people are afraid of public transportation. They're afraid to go to the stores, they're afraid to go to the schools, because it's flight of fight, and it's reality to them. And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to provide this support so they can touch us and not have to travel two hours to uh a location where their safety is in jeopardy.
Now, can I piggyback on that?
Yes, yes.
To Jim's question or his comments. Uh, essentially, the way I'm, if I'm hearing this correctly, essentially, uh what he has laid out is exactly why we came up with this model. We have people that are doing this work, but everybody's working in a silo. Everybody's working in a silo because of the way the funding streams work here in Champagne County. Uh, I think I heard Jim several times mention that we've been getting money. Uh, First Followers has been getting money, yes, that's true. But at the same time, those same pools of money and pots of money, the dream has to, they're they're getting, for an example, Dream is getting the same money from that particular pool, but there's only so much money that can go around. So it's kind of like, we can only ask for so much because we're being underserved. And we all know that, for us personally, we we have boots on the ground. So we use an entirely different model. And what that means is that it's community-based, it's really community-based. And if you heard a lot of the speakers that have spoke tonight, we have lived experiences that oftentimes people that sit in these positions of power cannot and will not understand. And I think I I think I heard him say he cannot understand that. And you can't understand something that you have not been a part of unless you're open-minded. And so with that being said, this is the model that we're talking about as far as bringing all of these folks together and agencies together that are doing similar work, so there won't be any overlap. And that way, we can build capacity, and we can share different resources. Not only share different resources, but there's gonna be different clients or the same clients. But right now, what we've seen personally, what I've seen with First Followers since we, and since our inception, as Tiger or James Corbin mentioned, we just don't get one person in with just one particular issue. we just don't get one person in with just one particular issue. First Followers is a reentry program. We deal with placing people into employment or getting them the critical records or finding them opportunity. We don't deal with homelessness. But for the last, since the pandemic, the last eighteen months, we've been dealing with homelessness. We didn't deal with gun violence. But since we're in the community and we see people with all these issues and these situations going on, the circumstances, we would be remiss not to try to do something and provide a service that our mission does not provide or the mission, the initial mission that we have. So we've grown. But that's one of the reasons why we birthed this idea as far as let's bring together the agencies that are out here doing similar, doing work. But at the same time, I might have a client today that has sixteen different things going on. I can only provide two or three needs. So when you talk about, I think you read from, I'm not exactly sure what he was reading, but I think he was talking about the youth. Whatever agency that is. Yeah, they're getting funding, but at the same time, how effective, what they're doing, how effective is that? So we have to ask those questions. So essentially what I'm saying is that we came together and this H three model is exactly that. It's called understanding the harm that has been caused, finding strategies and ways to deal with the healing, because you're not going to move forward until a person is healed holistically. And that develops hope. Right now, we're just putting Band-Aids on top of issue after issue after issue and making referrals to the extent that what Tiger talked about is, you know, the wait time, you know, people need services now immediately. Or they're going to find themselves just floating around doing what they want to do or what they think is best. So Jim, we're speaking the same language. Exactly what you read is the exact same issue that wildly developed this here CDC model.
Mr. Moore, if you'd, if you'd like to respond, and then we'll go back to board members for more questions.
Sure. I just want to reiterate some of the things that Mr. Mitchell and Dr. Purnell said. And I hope Jim's paying attention. She, she's taught, they are both talking about people who essentially delivering services who have been in those shoes. I don't know. Did you hear what Mr. Mitchell said about his experience? Did you hear what Tiger said about his? Did you hear what Mrs. April, Miss April said about her experience? We're not talking about people who have spent four years in college getting a degree and then coming out and acting like they know what, how to address these, this, this problem. And when, when I listen to Tiger and Mark talk about entrepreneurship, I'm reminded, my grandfather was a sharecropper in Virginia in nineteen twenty, but his father was ten years old when the Civil War ended. And he went to Pittsburgh to work in the factory. And what happened to Pittsburgh in nineteen seventy, United States Steel said, we're not going to do steel anymore. And I don't know if you can imagine how devastating economically that was to the community. And so what was left, Mrs. Carter put her finger on it. What's left is I got to become an entrepreneur all of a sudden because that foundation that built America called industrialism disappeared. And it left a huge mark in the African-American community that we're still struggling to get out of. One thing you, neither, no one's spoken of, you know, that it only takes mortgage companies just a little bit to provide mortgages so people can buy homes. And that reduces violence by nine percent in the community. So let's, if you want to, want to really talk about this stuff, you need to talk about it. And if all of these programs, Jim, that you said have, have money and they're doing all these things, why did this event balloon and explode like that? Because they don't know where these things come from. And to act like First Followers is somehow falling down on a job and that they would be taking money from these effective jobs, these agencies, which in fact are not dealing with the problem in the way that we, we think they are, you completely missed this whole presentation tonight. So Stephanie, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Strab.
Thank you. I just wanted to first thank everybody for coming out tonight for the time, heart, and expertise you've put into this presentation. We clearly need these services desperately in our communities. As someone who provides community service during my day job, I have to say that the more the merrier, right? Until we don't have a gun violence crisis in our communities, we need to keep developing programs. The same medicine doesn't work for every person despite the ill. I guess my point of clarification is just wondering, with what other partners are you planning on collaborating in this one-stop shop? What do you envision or who do you envision bringing on board with this?
Whomever would like to respond.
I can, I can handle that. So initially, we started this journey back in mid, early May. And so we sent out a email blast, just inviting everybody into the ideation session where we can have this conversation. And at that point, we had nine or ten organizations that that had showed up and were, you know, listening to the conversation as we kept, as we continued to meet over the months. Some people pushed away from the table and for whatever reason. Some of the reasons that we got was the fact that it was, you know, capacity, because it takes a lot of work to try to develop, develop this. And while they're doing the other programs and services that they're trying to keep up with, again, it's, it's the it's the issue of being, not having the capacity to do so many different things, especially when there's so many different issues. Because I just spoke about First Followers. We had a mission statement. We find ourselves in a situation where there's always mission creep, right? Or scope creep. But it's the love and the passion that we have for our communities that we spread ourselves so thin. Now, to answer your question about who do we plan on partnering with, any community-based organization that has a passion, the love, and the wherewithal to come out and work along with us to resolve some of the issues. Because I tell my staff and, you know, our volunteers that, you know, we, we, there's certain things that we just cannot do. We understand that. We really understand that. For an example, the homelessness situation, I heard a few comments from the public talking about the moratorium. This time next month, next month, there's going to be a big issue in Champaign County if we don't address that now. So one of the things might be, see you at homes, come to the table, right? Other things, we have been concentrating a lot on community violence, right? But we also know that some community violence comes from domestic violence. Courage Connection, come to the table. We've also done, when I say we, First Followers has also done some work within the school districts, one sixteen and Unit Four. Now we're seeing what we have been talking about during graduation back in May, in June twenty twenty. Now we're seeing the effects of what's happening one week into the school year with this violence. By us having boots on the ground, we can first shadow and foresee some of these things because I deal with, just like one of the speakers, Mr. Vince Undoho. He, we deal with young people. And if you see a young man without hope at fourteen, fifteen years old, by the time he's seventeen, eighteen years old, this is what you get. This is exactly what you get. So Unit Four School District, come to the table. So there's a lot of different entities that's out there that's, we're all experiencing these issues to the extent that somebody has to do something. And coming from a grassroots organization that is very limited, we only have one full-time employee on staff. Nobody gets any kind of, any kind of benefits, whether that's retirement, health insurance, or any of that. None of us get that. We're working off a shoestring budget with a lot of volunteers and some of the folks that do get a stipend that were holding two or three different jobs. So when you talk about all these organizations getting money and you compare what we get versus what other companies or agencies or organizations are getting, do the math. I mean, we can go into this on and on and on, because at the end of the day, we have to do the work. It's the mission. And it's all a question about capacity, and we're at a point in time where the county is getting forty-one million dollars over the next three years. The city of Champaign is getting twenty-five million dollars over the next three years. Urbana, fourteen million, Rancho, eight, nine million. So these are, this is a pot of money where we can redress this situation if we act now. Instead of looking into this, this narrow hourglass about what used to be, what, 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 what people are getting because apparently whoever is, has been doing this work for some time, they're dropping the ball somewhere. And we need to figure it out as a group, as a collective, and as a coalition.
Mr. Patterson.
Thanks. I just want to thank everybody who came out to speak to us tonight, both the presenters who have been working hard for, you know, quite a while now to develop this proposal, as well as the people who came up for public comment, and there was a lot of different entities represented, particularly those individuals tonight who have shared their personal stories. I know this is a very painful thing, and, you know, I deeply appreciate putting those narratives on the record because we a lot of times talk about this in kind of a emotionally disconnected way. And we also a lot of times talk about gun violence with just focusing on the actual violence itself. I think it's so crucial to address the community trauma and the ripple effect that that truly has. When it comes to, you know, there's been like discussions about the roles of the cities. And I just want to remind everybody that the amount of money the county was granted was based on the population of the entire county. With that being said, you know, Champaign, Urbana, based off the new census numbers, just within this two-city limits, is sixty-one percent of the county. I know looking at the twenty nineteen American Community Survey data, when you include Savoy in the unincorporated areas, I mean, we're talking about seventy percent of the county within this area of Champaign or Bana, the contiguous metro. So you know, typically, you know, our turf in many ways is the unincorporated areas, which we have a lot of authority. We typically have much less of a budget than the cities of Champaign and Urbana. They're home, they're home role entities. They have more extensive neighborhood services. They have the fund. This situation is different, and we're responsible for the full county. Right now, this is the issue of our community. This is the, besides obviously the global pandemic, this is the most important issue affecting our community. We have forty-one million dollars. You know, it's not a perfect setup. You know, it's not recurring funds. I mean, there, there's certainly different aspects of it. But we shouldn't be coming up with excuses to not do this. We should be coming up with excuses to do it. And I think that we all have heard plenty of dialogue tonight to show the reason why we have to act. There's also been a lot of discussion about duplication of services. I don't mean any disrespect to the Regional Planning Commission. I don't mean any disrespect to, you know, First Followers, the CU Trauma and Resiliency. You know, a lot of different entities doing this work, but none of those groups, none of those programs are solving these crises on their own. And the idea that if one group is doing something, having another group do that same thing is somehow duplication, and I think it's just kind of an out-of-touch analysis of that situation. I think that, I mean, we have to acknowledge that there are issues of access to the programs that exist. You know, we've seen reports recently that of the billions of dollars that have been invested by the federal government into rental assistance, nationally, only fifteen percent of that has been distributed. The CDC moratorium eviction just ended. Illinois is potentially coming up soon. Only fifteen percent. So, you know, I work in human services, and something that I think is not obvious from the outside is that access can be an issue. There, there are certain things that we run into. I mean, one of them is literacy. I mean, I mean, there, there, there are many aspects of having complicated programs that people struggle to get access to. And so having people who can navigate those programs, having these community-based entities that understand the populations they're working with, understand the unique characteristics, and are also able to help people navigate a very complicated web of programs. It's, it's not easy. And, and, you know, from my perspective, working in human services, one of the most valuable services you can provide is intensive case management, sort of, you know, wraparound services, you know, helping to guide people through the system to, you know, be able to acquire those benefits. I think that, you know, addressing this issue for us, it's, what we can do is invest in what I sort of see as indirect solutions. Basically, everything that was discussed tonight. You know, we've seen we can't arrest our way out of this problem. It, it, it's very apparent to me that the deterrent of going to prison the rest of your life is not something that is effective. And instead of being reactionary, I think the most humane thing to do, the most moral thing to do is invest in programs and systems that prevent people from getting to that point in their life to where, where they feel the need to take those types of actions. So I'm really supportive of a lot of what was discussed tonight and you know, I think it is imperative that the county invest money into these types of programs. Thanks again.
Dr. Wood, did you want to respond?
Yes, I wanted to address a couple of the issues that have been raised recently. First, I want to thank Kyle Patterson for his very powerful statement, because I think his framing was incredibly important in terms of where we currently are with this discussion. I want to reiterate some points that were made earlier in relation to what Kyle Patterson brought up. And that in all the studies, and again, I'm somebody who grew up in the very same situations that had been expressed. I'm from Atlanta. Well, we, throughout my childhood, we averaged over a hundred and twenty murders per year. And I grew up in these neighborhoods and I've seen a lot. And one of the things that I often witnessed as a child is that nobody knew where to get services. It dealing with any issues related to employment. Even though Atlanta is a large city with a lot of people making a lot of money with a lot of services, nobody knew how to get them, and when they tried to find them, they could not get to them. So access has always been an issue. And so one of the things I study in my research and the work I do on the ground is that this is not just an Excelsior in San Francisco, where over eighty percent of the respondents in their survey said they had no idea how to get basic services. But I also saw this in examples in Chicago where I've studied and in New York and in Atlanta and other parts of the country. So this is a structural issue that we've been talking about in that when you see this kind of inaccessibility and also the non-disseminating of information, what ends up occurring is exactly that. It becomes a disillusionment and a lack of the passing and also the fragmentating, the fragmenting of the communities and the neighborhoods. But where I've seen these community centers that do decide, again, we're going to not only offer services of our own, but we're going to try to have a, a space where you can be educated on the services, and we're going to streamline and cut down on the number of barriers to have resources that are, that are not, attempt not to deal with an issue as Kyle Patterson and I brought up earlier, but to build a preventative foundation so that you have something on the offensive to deal with neighborhoods and building them stronger for the future. And so these types of community centers have been adamant about that type of system because much of the stuff that they did in Excelsior was about first and foremost getting enough of the information from all the other services that were available to see if we, to evaluate whether this was something that could be done. Do we need to even build a center? And in their case, they say, yes, we have to, because there is no way that our community members will benefit from what's happening in the city of San Francisco as working-class predominantly undocumented Filipino, Filipina people. They needed something else. And so they thought alternatively, when things weren't working after evaluating, which is what the groups that are participating in this in Champaign have done, thinking alternatively and attempting to build a preventative measure when all else has failed. And so that's what is happening here. And so I just wanted to address that whenever this kind of thing comes up, there's always the situation that has a historical basis in terms of access, particularly for working-class Black and Brown people, when these kinds of issues are discussed. It's about resources and about access and power, which lead to the, the social crises we face today. And I'll stop there.
Thank you, Dr. Wood. Mr. McGuire and Mr. Store, and I ask both of you just to remember that the hour is late. So first, Mr. McGuire.
Okay. I know you let other people speak for a long
Okay, I know you let other people speak for a long period of time. So, I first, I want to talk uh directly to Tom Moore and his comments, um, someone who he knows that I've been around for more than thirty years, because that's probably one, the first time I met him. I still have a lot of respect for him and what he does in the community. But to say that, to maybe correct that people that are involved in these programs across the county don't have an understanding or may not have the background or the racial makeup as they do these jobs, I don't think that really um shows an understanding of who's working throughout the county to try to take care of these programs. I know many of you met the people that are, that are involved. I've seen them react when the Community Action Board, whether it's Loving with Limits or, or any other program, that they worked tirelessly to support these families and put them in a better place. And the excitement of the families as they be, as they got into that better place, as they, as they cried about the fact that their lives were changing. And I'm not saying that you haven't been, you know, talking about very positive things. But this issue has been complicated to say that uh, they haven't been successful, so we should move the movies, the money somewhere else. They have been very successful. First Followers, I, I asked the question before, how many clients did you serve? How many people re-offended? What are those numbers? I know what they are because of, we have our own reentry program. It's not that you haven't been diligent in your work or haven't tried, or haven't, don't have those reas, you know, resources, because you have. Expulsion um conference, that has a significant amount of support for the community. But where is the best place to put this money? And something that's just a thought? A positive thought? Or something that has real legs, real structure, real support by people that have that have educations to support the people that we want to serve? That isn't going to change. The people that have these programs and have the structure and accountability and years of support in the community are the best place to put that money. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Um, Mr. Store.
Thank you, Chairman Furtado. I echo uh, Mr. Patterson's acknowledgement and appreciation for all those who came to this meeting. And uh, appreciate the presentation very much. I, I learned a bit. I'd just two comments. One, uh, I didn't, I don't think I remember hearing that there was anything said about computer and technology literacy. I know that this is a, a big hurdle for some folks who've been released from incarceration and as well as other members of the community, and I urge you if this uh program is funded, I hope that it will be, that uh you uh incorporate computer and technology uh education as part of the general education. And I, I suspect that uh, as some of the projects and programs progress, if some, you, you'll go from development stage to uh implement implementation stage and sustainability stage, not on an annual basis, but as as the uh programs developed, I'm, I'm sure that you won't kind of hold back on that, or at least I hope not. And with that, I'll uh conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Um, Jen Straub.
Just wanted to briefly point out that most of us want to serve all of the people of Champaign County.
Jenny Laxton.
All right, just a, a real brief uh comment slash question. Mr. McGuire had questioned something about the education of the people who have put together this presentation and who are working with this group, and I think I've counted at least four among you who are either in PhD programs right now or have doctor next to your name already. Mr. Mitchell, maybe, I know that you're one of the ones who's in a PhD program. You could maybe fill me in on the backgrounds.
I sure can. Uh, yeah, I picked up on that as well, and, and to just be honest, it was kind of a, you know, it was really offensive to imply that a small community-based organization driven by the passion of the community, the black community in particular, to be uneducated. I found that very offensive, but just to answer your question, yeah, I have a bachelor's in computer science, a bachelor's in, in engineering, a master's in education, and I'm a PhD student in an education program here at the University of Illinois. Dr. Regina Purnell, she just finished up her doctor's degree in social work. Uh, James Tiger Corbin, when he first came into First Followers, he had a bachelor's degree, and he interned with us to get his master's degree. I have four other mentors who have come in from the University of Illinois, finished up a bachelor's degree and a master's degree. I have one that's at the UIC in Chicago that's getting a doctor's degree. So, me personally, as far as my journey, I always look at it in two ways. You know, I got a, a profession. The University of Illinois is in my doctor's program, and that's a professional degree. But I have a passion. What good would it be for me to sit in the ivory tower and secure a doctor's degree and just do a lot of research in theory, when I'm seeing my community devastated by this thing, I mean, what we're seeing right now? I mean, I, I would be doing myself a disservice, my family a disservice, so the passion is there, the education is there. What is missing is the capacity. And I mentioned this earlier. If I can have ten folks that's working with this, with my organization, to the extent where they're doing it for free, most of them are doing it for free, but they're still doing the work, and then we're being compared to places like the Youth Assessment Center, who have everybody in their organization on staff as far as employees with full time benefits, retirement packages, and things like that, that's an apples-to-oranges uh comparison, and I think that's kind of one of what one of the reasons why we come up with this H three model, because it's all, it's, it's, it's a, it's, as, as Richmond put it, it's a radical shift, and some people don't like the word radical, but it has to be a radical shift because we're at radical times. And so, again, if I didn't step to the forefront and come up with a group of like-minded individuals that are community-based organizations to come together, pool our resources, and then hold a governing body like Champaign County, the Champaign County Board, that's getting forty-one million dollars, and ask for ten percent of that to redress the situation that is, we're all involved, then we wouldn't be doing our due diligence as a, as an organization or organizations. So, I knew this was going to be a heavy lift, but you know, it's always been a heavy lift. We started this organization back in two thousand fifteen with no money, with all volunteers. Our first grant was eight thousand dollars. But since then, we've built on our successes and our reputation and the trustworthiness, trustworthiness that we have in our community to build this towards an organization that really have boots on the ground doing the work. We are tied into not only local funding, but state funding. We've handled state of Illinois grants, we've had the ICJ grant. We've had other uh state grants, the access to justice grants, we've had national grants, federal grants. We have all of that. We even have foundations that sponsor us. So this is not about First Followers being just a First Followers initiative, it, this is just First Followers being a, a member of a coalition. And I don't understand how we got to this point where First Follow is being singled out, because my whole thing is, and I said it before, we have to stay in our lane, we do what we do best, but we've been pulled and turned in so many different directions that some of these organizations that I know personally say they're doing the work, they're not doing the work, because if they were doing the work, we would have these issues. The education system is broken, period, point blank. I studied, I researched education systems. I use a culturally responsive lens. I know what critical pedagogy looks like. So these are all things that I've taken from the academy down to my community, or back to my community, and said, this is what we need, and this is what we can use. So one of the arguments that I always hear in the academy is how do you get from theory to practice? That's one of the biggest things that, that's always been an argument. But I can honestly say First Follower has done that, and we're going to continue to do that. Know why? Because I got a support system and qualified individuals by my side is going to make it happen. So this whole notion about not having an education to handle something, I found that very, very offensive. Thank you.
All right, um, we are now at three and a half hours, so I'm going to give the mic to a Mr. Patterson, and then we're going to, we're going to end, we're going to call the meeting. Um, so, Mr. Patterson.
So I'd like to address the issue of um the inference that I'm a racist, because I disagree with the, the, the issues in the presentation that you've brought forward. Um, it's very disappointing. I worked very hard throughout the community to serve the community, and you know that, because I've seen you and worked with you. The issue of education wasn't about whether you have education. Issue was what education you have to serve this group or the, or comparison to the people that are currently working in these programs and have the experience. Don't conflate those to attack me. It's, it's unfortunate and disappointing. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Patterson.
Thank you. Um, and I, and I wanted to, you know, stay positive, because it's a really positive discussion about, you know, some really critical issues. But, but I just have to address for the record, it's been stated several times, um, there's been critiques of First Followers' performance based upon something to do with their recidivism rates. Um, but there's been no information presented about what the recidivism rates are. There was reference to um, the reentry program or the reentry data for the county. That's not First Followers' data, that, that's based off the whole picture. And so uh, if those types of concerns are going to be raised at this professional body, it needs to come with backup. Um, this is just, I mean, this is, it's, it's disinformation as far as I'm concerned to raise these open questions without providing an actual answer and just insinuate. And just all the critiques of incompetency, I don't know, I've been on this board for five years, I don't know if I've ever seen uh, an outside entity present to us and have um such a, you know, rapid-fire succession of criticisms of competency, and, and it always comes back this topic of competency, and you know what, like, like Marlon alluded to? You know, I know I've never seen a presentation, we've had several speakers that are all people of color, and the fact that I've never seen that, and I've also never seen that sort of behavior, I mean, i- it's, this is something that uh, black folks have to deal with all the time, and I, I just found that those statements to be disgusting.
All right, so I'm going to call this meeting, um, because, like I said, I think we need to respect the time of the presenters. Um, I think that we've been given a lot to think about, and um, I, I also, I, I do want to lift up the fact that that not only did folks give us three and a half hours of their time, but they spoke um from intensely personal spaces, and I appreciate that a great deal. And I don't know, honestly, if we've had um a collection of people at a board meeting with the level of knowledge that we have. And I think maybe one of the things is we cut down on the personal biographies in order to get into the presentation. Um, but I'm just, I'll just give you one example. Um, I, I'll, I'll just give you one example. Uh, Dr. Helen Neville is a personal heroine of mine. She's the author of, co-editor of five books. She has co-written ninety journal um articles. She has won the Association of Black Psychology, Psychologists, Distinguished Psychologist of the Year Award, um, has done on-the-ground grassroots organizing and community work in our community for the entire time that I've been here, has served as a mentor and done a lot of other um, really important work and received more awards than I have space and time to address here right now. And she just gave us three and a half hours of her time. Um, so I want to thank everyone for the time that you did give us, and I could read everybody else's resumes. But I singled out Dr. Neville because she is a longtime, been somebody that I have admired as somebody who balances intense scholarship with actual um, on-the-ground making a difference, and it's, I admire a great deal, so I wanted to mention that. We are going to have another one of these tomorrow, so go home, drink some water, uh, come back, and we're going to talk about um um, access to affordable housing. We heard from a lot of folks um, earlier in the public comment and interwoven throughout the comments that you all gave us tonight, that this is an issue that is pressing in our community and has the potential to be more pressing. Uh, we will be hearing from the Housing Authority, we will be hearing from the Rental Assistance Program that exists at RPC. Um, and we will also be hearing from several organizations who are doing work on the ground and organizations that have proposals on ways that we could do that work that we could support that work even more. All right, thank you all. I think we could probably keep on talking all night, but I'm going to call it, have a good night, and thank you all, to all of our presenters for your time, and and I think I'm going to go back to the word that Dr. Purnell said, the fidelity of your proposal. Um, I appreciated that a great deal. Thank you.